I'd like to call to order the meeting for the workshop for the Mayor and City Council of the Town of Tawnee Town. Ask Councilman Vigliotti to lead us into place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present, with the exception of Mayor Pro-Tam Foster, who has an appointment at the awards ceremony at Carroll Community College. I sent everybody an email. By consensus, does everybody approve of that option?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, very good. The first item of business today is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2016-2017, operating budget. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on the operating budget?
From the public?
Yes, it is a public hearing.
This is the public hearing. Public hearing is scheduled to expire at 7:45, so we'll leave that public hearing open till 7:45 unless, in case somebody comes in late who would like to say something. Next, we have minutes for consideration. Is there any additions or corrections for the minutes of April 6th or April 11th regular meetings?
I have a few things, Mr. Mayor. On the April 11th meeting, which is the voting session, the April 6th meeting is the draft minutes for Monday's vote on the work session, where no votes are taken on the work session. On the April 11th, the council met, and that's a voting session, so it records some votes. All the votes that are made are recorded on Monday meetings. Under Charter Amendment, it says, Charter Resolution CR 2016-01, Removal of Elected Officials from Office, motion to adopt by Zambetti, second by Foster. After discussion about the necessity of the ordinance, the vote was four in favor and Frazier opposed. There was a lengthy discussion about the elected official's ordinance. I produced a piece of paper and gave it to everybody about a thing called a Bill of Attainer, which is a constitutional provision that forbids an executive branch from charging a person and then convicting a person. Under the English common law, up until today, under our Constitution, the executive branch, like a state's attorney, can charge a person, but only a judge or jury can convict a person of a crime. And this discussion is not listed here. All said about that discussion, and it was a lengthy discussion, if you watch the video, is that there is a necessity of passing the ordinance on a vote of four to one. And I propose that that's misleading and take that out. I don't think there's any necessity of passing or removal from ordinance. I think it's designed specifically as an attack against the minority member of the council. And I propose a different wording here. It says, after a lengthy discussion, to describe the fact that you should watch the video, because it was a lengthy discussion, about the concerns about the necessity of passing it. Because there were lots of concerns aired when I brought it up, lots of concerns aired when the public addressed us after the meeting at the well. And I think I made a continued and ongoing effort to try to stop this council from raping the minutes process through a vote that happened before, so that they don't accurately reflect what happens at the meeting. And a motion was made and seconded and passed by you. Over my objection, that we would strip all the reality of the minutes and they would not really reflect what happens at the meeting, and this is a prime example of it.
I'm confused about what you're talking about. Are you objecting, is the vote count wrong? Is that what you're saying?
Let me read it again for you, if you didn't understand. I thought everybody had read their packets already. It says, Charter Resolution 2016-01, Removal of Elected Officials from Office. A motion was adopted by Zambetti and Foster after a discussion about the necessity of the ordinance. The ordinance is not necessary, should never have been passed by the council, and it's not a necessary ordinance, and there is no necessity of it.
Councilman, it's not your place to write the minutes. Your place is to correct any errors.
And that's what I'm doing, Mr. Mayor. I'm correcting this.
Tell me what the error is that you're trying to correct.
Well, it's not just--
That's where I'm confused.
You shouldn't be confused at all. I just add, what I would like to, after the words "after" A, add the word lengthy, so people would have an accurate reflection of what really happened at the meeting on April 11th. And then, secondly, where it says "the necessity," I would like to add the words "concerns about the necessity," because the discussions were about how concerned people were about passing this charter resolution. This is an amendment to the Constitution of the town.
Okay. Thank you. We'll consider that on Monday night. Any other additions?
That's one, two, three, four, five additional words to the section on the first page.
Mr. Mayor, may I dispute that?
It will be presented as an amendment to the minutes on Monday night, so it will vote the minutes as amended or not. That's all.
I understand.
So, do you have--
May I have an opportunity to rebut that?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
I have a second one, if I still have--
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman.
Uh-huh.
The core of the discussion was whether there was a need or not for the Charter Resolution. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I raised-- May I address Councilman Wans?
I'm not prepared for you to address me. I was looking for one word.
Well, you asked me a question.
Right, and it was a yes or no question. This is not the time for a platform, and you cannot use this time to further a platform like that. What I'm saying is, after a discussion about the necessity of the ordinance, it's not saying that the ordinance is a necessity. It's saying we discussed whether or not it was a necessity. It's a very, it says exactly what happened. That's why I don't understand why it needs to change.
I just repeat what I said earlier, and I hope everybody takes note of it. There was a lot of concern about why we're amending the charter, a lot of concern about the way it was done, a lot of concern about difficulties of the majority oppressing the minority.
As I recall, you were the only ones who had those concerns. Nobody else did.
No, no, that's not accurate. There's a lengthy discussion occurred, if you watched the video, and then comments from the well, like I said before.
Was it anybody but you and your surrogates that had the objections?
I don't know what you mean when you say that.
You don't know? How about, or your wife? Anybody else that had objections from the well?
I don't recall.
Okay, thank you.
But I know that it was--
Again, let's move on. We cannot go through this agenda and rehash everything we rehashed last month, simply because you voted four to one against the--
It's just misleading.
That's all.
And I want this corrected on Monday, and I'm going to try to get that through on Monday.
Let me point out something that-- You're allowed to make any amendment you like on Monday. If you get a second, we'll bring it to a vote. If not, it'll die. Simple as that.
You know, the only thing I would agree to is add the word lengthy to discussion. Okay? That's the only thing I can agree with. Because what we talked about was exactly what's there, only it was a lengthy discussion.
We thoroughly did examine it.
Well, it's not, it's just that there's a necessity to amend the charter, but it doesn't, it was popped up out of staff. No, there was no city, there was no city hearing on it. There was no effort of citizens to try to get the charter amended.
Councilman Frazier, it says about the necessity, not that it was necessary. It says about-- All that we're doing is addressing whether there are any objections to the minutes. We're not looking to change what we talked about last week. It's already done.
The second additions or corrections for the minute is found on the last page of the April 11th minutes. It says, a motion by Frazier to have his recent trip to the Philippines recognized as excused absence. There was no action, there was no second, and that's all it said about that. What you did was you passed an ordinance that said if you didn't have an excused absence, three consecutive excused absences, and the council majority didn't feel like excusing them, that one person, like Diane Foster, who got an excused absence today, could be absent, and you just vote three to two that that's excused. But if you don't like a council member, you could just fail to excuse their absences. And that was a business trip for me, and I sought to seek a unity of the people, whether I had an excuse--
Don, I am sure--
And I think the minutes don't reflect that everybody at the table here said there was no problem with my trip to the Philippines.
Don, don't you understand? It says three consecutive meetings.
I was missed three consecutive meetings--
No, you didn't. You missed two.
I did miss three meetings.
And besides, that was before the ordinance was passed.
No, you're wrong about that. I missed, I missed my meeting to the Rexon Parks meeting.
That has--
Because that was on--
That's enough.
I give up on you. It's been a year.
This is absolutely stupid. It's absolutely ridiculous.
Well, I'm concerned--
That motion was completely out of order. I shouldn't have even entertained it. Because the cotton-picking meeting you missed wasn't even part of the ordinance.
I missed three consecutive meetings by taking the ten day trip to the Philippines.
If you would have missed twenty consecutive meetings, it wouldn't have mattered, because the ordinance was effective last week.
But it matters if you want to tag me on it. If you're going to be unfair and unjust and bigoted and tag me on it--
That motion was out of order. It should be struck from the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's time, okay?
Those are the two corrections--
But I have the floor for a few minutes, please. I don't know how much more. Okay? It was, it was a year ago, okay?
No, no, it's January of this year.
Will you please, I have it now. Thank you. A little bit of history. It was a year ago when Councilman Frazier was elected onto the city council. It happened to be a year ago Monday, right?
A year ago today, actually, to the date.
Pardon?
A year ago to the date today.
Was it to the date?
Yes, May 4th.
I'm very happy to be on the council.
And I've been, I've been sitting here for a whole year now, saying that, well, okay, he started out, yeah, he didn't come to the workshop before he was sworn in. Okay, we can forgive that one, okay? And then, the second meeting, he was here in June, he picked on the mayor and he started embarrassing the mayor about Memorial Day, all right? And I figured, okay, you know, we'll give him a year. I think he can grow into the job. It hasn't happened. Nothing has changed. He hasn't said a word yet that would in any way improve the quality of life for the city residents. Everything he's done has been against anything that's going on. I just don't understand why you haven't, in one year, shown some, at least some, growth into the job. It just hasn't happened.
I just don't think that--
And nobody's picking on you.
You should have made a motion to cut the meat out of the minutes at a recent--
Would you please, well, wait a minute. Would you--
Nobody, okay, is picking on you. I don't know why you continue to say, we're picking on--
We'll have to see what happens in the future months. Those are my two additions and corrections.
This is the thing I'm talking about. You sit here laughing at us, okay?
I think it's hilarious.
When that vote, when your vote came up, okay, you, you made a big boisterous announcement, waving your hand about, I got 500 votes. You didn't get 500 votes.
How many votes did I get?
In a minute, I'll tell you. I did some research on it.
I would like to know how many votes I got.
Three hundred and seventy-seven.
Three seventy-seven.
Second highest vote ever.
Twenty, twenty votes from zero, from not being gone, okay? How many votes did he get?
Three seventy-seven.
No, Brad got three seventy-seven. Brad got three seventy-seven.
There are millions of minutes now. This is how little I can get done with this council.
He got 303, okay? That's what it is. He got 42 percent of the vote. He finished some 20 votes from not being elected. He won by about five.
He won by five?
He won by five, okay? As a little example, when I ran last time, okay, I ended up with 70 percent of the vote. This is the guy claiming he got a mandate because he got 42 percent. I just don't, I just can't understand--
I think I said that.
Yes, you did.
I'm trying to amend the--
All right, let's, let's move on. We have a full agenda to talk about.
Showing any, any growth at all into the job.
All right, well, that's, again, I want to make this statement, starting from here forward. Anytime an item comes up that we talked about and settled by vote in the past, we'll not talk about again. You have every right to bring up any kind of motion you want on Monday night, and if it gets a second, we can entertain it to move forward. But I'm not going to rehash the same thing over and over and over and over again. I will not do it.
I'd like to make--
So, if, if that starts, I'm gonna, I'm not going to entertain it. Also, it's 7:45, and it's time for the public hearing to end on the budget. Is there anyone, one more time, is there anyone like to speak on the budget? Not would like to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, I'm opposed to closing that. Did you want to speak on the budget?
Yes.
All right, let's move on.
I'll speak to you.
We have public comment on items that are not on the agenda. These are items that are not currently listed on the agenda. Does everyone have any comments on items that are not on the agenda? Barbara, can you come up? Barbara raised her hand. And because of the size of the crowd, I'm going to hold comments to three minutes.
Okay, I have a short one, and I have a little longer one. It's not, in the last election, I had hoped for younger people on the council to get one, and we got two, and I'm very pleased. And on the next election, I'm hoping we get some women on the council. We need balance.
Good thought.
That's my first subject. Second subject is, two months ago, someone on the council said, herein the council, we are not Democrats or Republicans. We are just, and I missed the last word. Was it us or citizens? Whatever.
Citizens of Tawnee Town.
Was it whatever? I've been thinking on this ever since, and as I am an independent, I was pleased to hear this, very much so. Since then, I've run across two articles that were in the Washington Post that proved to me, to me, that my decision is correct. One of them shows the way that being one group works, and one not so good, but it does say that working together is the way to do it. So, I have a copy of those two articles here to give to you all, and I have additional copies to give to the citizens.
Thank you, Barbara.
Can we get those now?
Yes, whenever you want, but I don't think anyone agrees with that at all.
All right, who would like to speak next?
I will address the issue of having a sitting councilman call a citizen a surrogate at the next time we can speak, because that would have something to do with the ethics legislation, so I'll withhold my comment on that. Anyway, regarding the referendum legislation, you can't use the democratic process to take away people's rights, especially the right to vote. The role of government is to protect people's rights, not to take them away, not even from each other, and especially from each other, because you were elected by the people, and whether you agree with a fellow councilperson or not, you cannot use your power as part of a majority vote to enact legislation that can never be used against the majority, but can only be used against a minority of the council. The problem with all of this legislation, which gives you the power as a sitting majority to remove a duly-elected fellow councilperson who holds a minority view on multiple issues such as tax increases, water sewer increases, medical marijuana, to name a few, and when I say minority, I mean minority on the council. There's quite a few majority of the citizens don't agree with those positions. It's the problem with that is that in the next election, one of you could be subject to the same harassment and removal from office when you become the new minority. So, to that end, we have already successfully collected 500 signatures for a petition to take the charter resolution to a vote. And so, if anybody is interested in, because, just to give you an example, if X number of people come out and vote for somebody, you can't just keep enacting legislation after legislation to give you the power to remove that person from office. The state constitution says the only cause for removing somebody from office is conviction of a crime, not whether they parted their hair on the left side or the right side, or, you know, did something that offended somebody or allegedly made somebody cry during a session. You can't, you can't use your authority to take away people's rights. So, there is a petition that's being signed already by 500 people, just need another couple hundred, and I would request that someone could make a motion that changing a charter is a major, a major task for a city, that you would voluntarily put this referendum to a vote, and let the citizens decide whether--
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, let the citizens decide whether this charter amendment about how you're going to remove an elected official that you don't like is really what they want. Thank you.
May I make a comment? I would like to ask the council right now what their sense of it is, so I know what to do in the future. Would you all be willing to change the vote you made and allow this to go to referendum, changing the town's constitution?
Not me.
Not you?
No.
You others are interested in doing that? I mean, since it happened, and most people don't even know it happened.
You have a way. Yes, they do. It was advertised. Don't, don't say it was done illegally, okay? Because it wasn't.
Most people I talk to didn't know it had happened.
Well, they don't pay attention. We can't help that. We can't drag them into everything. Now, come on.
Oh, so I thought I asked--
You have, you are doing the legal way. Go with the referendum.
Doing that, allowing this charter amendment to go. Because I think the council could do that.
I have--
But the council voluntarily send something to referendum?
I have very strong apprehension that this petition drive misrepresented the facts.
Well, I asked the attorney a question. Sorry to you, Mr. Mayor. Could the majority of the council ask a proposal to go to referendum?
Certainly.
I thought so.
Again, I'm very disturbed and very disappointed that this type of action would go on in our town. I received a email just Monday. Actually, I guess it was, it was, I guess it was Monday. And it was from a young lady that, I'm not going to use her name, but I'm going to read you the email. It's very short, and it kind of gives you the flavor for what was going on here. It said, Mr. Mayor, on Election Day, I was approached outside the Northwest Middle School by a lady asking me to sign the petition. I'm a 19-year-old, and this was my first election, and I got caught up in the words she spoke instead of researching the issue myself.
Mr. Mayor--
Please be quiet.
We are under the portion of the agenda that says, public comment from--
Please be quiet.
From the citizens on non-agenda--
I'm reading a piece of, I'm reading an email that has--
I think you should recognize the next--
That is pertinent to this subject.
But who's the parliamentarian?
I'm telling you. I signed the petition, and further investigation and personal research--
Can't we just go forward with getting public comment during the, during this portion of the agenda instead of preaching a sermon?
I'm going to ask the tenant, that's to remove you from this council if you don't shut up.
I think you're all well, well on the way to do that.
You think I'm kidding?
I really feel sorry for you, Don. I really do.
Let me finish reading my email. I got caught up in the words she spoke instead of researching the issue myself. I signed the petition, and further investigation and personal research, I found her approach had been, was very disindignuous, to say the least. The petition indeed was not about lowering taxes or water bills. As a receipt of this email, please remove my name from the information from this petition. The approach of preying on unknowing voters is wrong. And I wonder how many other folks feel the same way that signed that petition that didn't email me. Should be ashamed of yourself.
Mr. Mayor?
I want to speak.
We're in the portion of the agenda called, called Public Comment Pertaining Non-Agenda Items.
All right, who would like to speak next?
I would.
Robin?
Regarding the petition, I was there, one of the people gathering signatures, and it was, maybe the young lady didn't understand what was said, but the petition is about taking this charter amendment to the voters so that they do have time to research it and they can vote yes or no. We weren't trying to tell people they should vote one way or the other on it. All, all the petition is about is taking this charter amendment to remove fellow councilmen from the council, which should, in America, we vote them in and we vote them out, so I disagree with it. But it's to put it on the referendum so that people can look at it, read it, check it out, see if it's constitutional, and then vote on it. That's what it simply is about. We weren't trying to tell people to go one way or the other. We just want it to go to referendum. That's what it's about, and that's what we're getting signatures for. And we, you know, if people misunderstood, that's a shame. But what's really a shame is the action that you all are taking, ignoring the Constitution, ignoring the will of the people, and thinking that you have the power to remove somebody for arbitrary reasons that with no definitions, and things like because they, they broke any federal, state, county, city law, code, and now you're getting ready to pass a code today that'll help you down the road to removing somebody, because you can make another--
What's that called?
Code of Conduct, which you'll be able to decide whether somebody did something right or wrong. And when they break that code, then you can remove them. So, anyway, what's appalling and shameful is the way you all act, and it's certainly something in America that we do all the time, which is to take questions to referendum so people can decide. We weren't trying to sell them one way or the other. We're just trying to tell them this is one way, that the people can look at this charter change, which is your constitution, and make a decision for themselves instead of just you all sitting up there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question? Did you not, when you were explaining what you were doing, tell the people that what the city council is trying to do is to kick anybody off the council if they vote wrong or if they, if they're not liked by the rest of the council? Did you not, you--
That's what I said.
I know, it was, I know. She was at the voting when I went, Catherine. When I went to vote, okay, you were standing there intercepting people as they were trying to get to vote. Now, if it was me, I'd have signed that thing just to get rid of you, okay? But you, you just happened to not be there when I went in. You were conveniently at the table. My neighbor came over and said, hey, you know what? She just told me that you guys are trying to kick people off the council because, one, you don't like them, two, they voted the wrong way. I don't think you'll find that anywhere in the charter--
Yes, you will.
--or in the Code of Conduct, okay? So, don't.
I gave people examples from real life. You are targeting a specific councilperson.
We've, we've heard from you, Miss Adelaide.
He pointed his finger at me, and my name is Catherine Adelaide, not surrogate, which would put you in violation of your own Code of Conduct, by the way.
Oh, you're not a surrogate of his?
No. My name's Catherine Adelaide. I'm a citizen, sir, citizen, and you could show more respect to citizens, like the Code of Conduct says you should do. So, just because I gave a few examples, they had the legislation there, and as Robin said, we invited them to, and, you know, if you read your charter, when we file it, I'm sure the city will be crawling up and down it, trying to remove as many signatures as possible. So, there is a, there is a provision to make sure if somebody, and plus, even if the signature isn't caught and somebody, whatever, if it goes to a referendum and they've figured it out, they can vote against it, which is the whole point, of getting it so that people can vote on it. So, whatever-- So, whatever alleged misrepresentations may have occurred can always be corrected through the election process.
Miss Adelaide, can I just say one word? If there's any question about how they feel, just replay tonight's video to when I tried to amend the minutes.
Oh, I know. You put, you put that-
People are trembling.
Right.
That'll be on YouTube.
Have a police officer-
That'll be on YouTube tomorrow morning.
We had one former councilman member march out just now.
Well, I think that former councilman has sour grapes, and you're sitting in his chair, and he doesn't like that. And even if a person wins an election by one vote, that's the democratic process, and you can't use it to oppress a minority opinion on the city council. It's illegal and unconstitutional.
All right. Let's move on. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to make? Jackie?
I'm Jackie Jones, and I live in Carol Vista, Vip 01, Clubside Drive. I don't know why we're even discussing this at this point because the agenda says comment pertaining to non-agenda items. And so we spent thirty minutes or more on just this one item, and we were still approving the minutes. So I think this is taking up very important time, that we should be discussing other things, and as far as I know, there hasn't been anything come up about any one of you. So why are we into this like this? This is splitting us. This is not good for this town. It's not only that, it's not leadership. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, is the charter amendment on today's agenda?
I beg your pardon?
Is the charter amendment on today's agenda?
I don't see it anywhere, except maybe if you want to get down here.
This is the time to talk about it. It's a non-agenda item.
All right. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make?
I'm a former councilman too, and take notice, I'm not trembling. I was a councilman nineteen seventy-eight to eighty-two. I've been attending these meetings ever since, and I've never seen anybody carry on at that bench like you have, Mr. Fraser, never. You should be censored, and you should be out.
Does anyone else like to make any comments?
I already have been censored. I don't know what for, but you already did that.
All right, well, let's move on to the statement about any conflicts of interest on the agenda tonight. Does anyone have any conflict of interest on tonight's agenda?
None, sir.
Nope.
All right, all negative. For Monday night, we'll be considering the adoption of ordinance twenty-three, two thousand and sixteen, the fiscal year real property tax and personal property tax rate, which is the same as it was the previous year. Would you have any comments or questions on that?
Yes, can I say a word about that? This actually, uh-
Again, we're not rehashing what we talked about last month, are we?
No, no, I just want to make it clear what you said. If I, if you just remember what the mayor just said, he said, "We're going to adopt the real property and personal property tax rates at Monday's meeting." Everybody should know the tax rate's going to be set at Monday's meeting, okay? That should be a big crowd for Monday's meeting. So I'd just like to read this tax rate document. It says, "Whereas the existing real property rate exceeds the constant yield rate." What is happening in Tony Town, ladies and gentlemen, is that what is going to be enacted is exceeds the constant yield rate. I'm the only councilman that voted to keep the constant yield rate and reduce the revenue to match last year's revenue. Your taxes are going up because it does not meet the cap. Get a copy of this from me or over on the table. That's what we're talking about, setting the property tax rate, okay?
All right. Next is ordinance twenty-four dash two thousand and sixteen, the fiscal year water and sewer rate. Any questions on that?
Yes, I do. There's been some talk around town that the, the water sewer rate is going up three percent, but that's not accurate.
Three and a half.
The, the, I was, the, the ordinance twenty-four, two thousand and sixteen says the rate increase to balance the water sewer budget can, can be three point five percent, which is less than predicted in the multi-year rate structure. That's on the third whereas. I have protested that the only reason that water and sewer rates are going up three and a half percent is because of the shifting of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of funding and perhaps other items in the budget, and I know that'll come up when we discuss it on Monday. So, my concern is that, to clarify, that the water rates without action to stop it on this council will go up three and a half percent on Monday, at Monday's meeting.
How many times has it been explained to you what's going on? Once or twice, maybe ten?
May I address Councilman Zambetti?
You can answer that, certainly.
I don't want to get into this, I think Barbara is correct. It's too much conflict.
Well, but you can't just let somebody say something and get away with it when they're totally wrong.
The mayor has asked for civility on the council.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to, I'm trying to show, explain to you-
With his permission, I'm asking, I'm, I'm making a point here because this is recorded, and there are people in the audience, and I want them to understand what's happening to them. If the council passes this resolution on Monday, their water bill's going to go up three and a half percent. Not three percent like I heard in recent weeks, but three, three and a half. Yes, many people to me said they'd read it in the paper.
Let's move on to resolution.
Mr. Mayor, please, we can't just let him make comments, okay?
That's what they said to me.
Now, he made a statement that what's happened is that the reason we have to increase the rate is because we've transferred three hundred and, I don't know, seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Twenty-nine.
Okay?
Three twenty-nine.
But he didn't explain why that was done. They make half statements, half truths, they don't follow through, and explain to the people what's going on. Since nineteen, what was it, eleven, I guess it was, twenty-eleven, we've been gradually increasing the rates instead of one massive increase so that the utility fund can stand on its own two feet. We had a plan to do that. That plan has been followed, and it just so happens that in FY seventeen, by, the plant said we should increase by no more than five percent. What we've done is we've taken out all the subsidies from the general tax revenue that we had been using to support the utility fund because it couldn't stand on its own two feet. We finally got to the point where we can do that, so we've transferred those numbers in. So now we don't have any more money coming out of the tax fund to support the utilities. We also were supporting utilities by not assigning everybody's time that should have been assigned partially to operating budget, partially to utility budget. We've now moved that over, so that doesn't, no longer has an impact. We no longer have to take money out of the reserve fund to pay for our, our cost of running the utility fund. So we now have the utility fund standing on its own two feet. We were able to do that by raising the water rate by twenty-five, twenty-six cents per thousand gallons of water and raising the sewer rate by, I think it's fifty-one cents per thousand gallons of water. We have done everything orderly. It has now come out to work out where next year, we are now operating on solid grounds. We're not subsidizing any, any utility fund from any other fund or by reassigning working time. So we, we've, we have now a good, firm, sound rate basis for water and sewer.
You are correct. Thank you for that synopsis. I appreciate that.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, this is the only discussion time before a vote is taken on Monday. That's what a work session's for.
Yes.
So I need to say, that is my opinion, that the shifting of funds and my study of the budget clearly shows that a large number was shifted. If you take, we went to the hearing on the tipping fee. When the tipping fee went up, Commissioner Wance voted for that to raise his tipping fee, and I got to testify that actually what was said by Commissioner Dennis Fraser Westminster was, if we move things into the fee structure, we can spend that money in the general fund. So I'm saying to the voters of Tony Town that the reason that three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars is shifted is so that they could spend an extra three hundred and twenty-nine thousand like they did at the constant yield rate, and they could grow the size of budget, and then sit here like they said tonight and say they're not raising our taxes, but that's not what's happening. What's really happening is the constant yield rate, property taxes going up, and the water rates going up, and I believe with the new homes, there are zeros in the budget, Mr. Mayor, for all the homes built in Carol Vista in the new project that we're going to vote on in a minute for water allocations, and there's zero in the budget, like I asked Henry Hind at the last meeting, for the houses where they cut down the forest in my neighborhood. And I think that if this is a year-forward budget, we're going to have some revenues. Can I ask the town manager a question?
Wait, wait a minute, before you change the subject again, okay? Let me, let me ask you again. Did you not understand why we moved the funds?
I don't agree with taking half the salary and putting it in on whatever wheel drive.
Why don't you agree? Why don't you agree?
I don't agree with it. I want to ask the other question.
Have you ever been to any of the meetings where some of this stuff has gone on?
After meetings.
Did they not? Well, come on, you haven't shown up at many of them.
That's not true. The allocation you made, that I do not attend meetings is a falsehood.
How much, how much time, how much time do you think Henry has spent just answering questions that you brought up?
Do I have to answer that?
Well, you don't have to. Let's, again, the, the, what, what you're talking about is something that we had a full discussion on last month. There's no need to read, to replay that record.
This is going to become law unless we discuss it tonight, okay?
Mr. Mayor?
I want to ask the town manager, while I still have the floor.
Thank you.
When do we collect the fourteen thousand four hundred dollars per building lot on where they cut down the forest behind my house?
When a building permit is issued.
And are there any building permits issued on any of these properties at Carol Vista I see being built, and that construction project over there?
No.
No permits have been issued?
The permits, they get a report every month.
I know.
You get a report every month.
I'm like a lawyer. I don't ask a question unless I know the answer to it.
Then you should know.
But I want the public to know the answer to that.
Then you should know. You should tell them.
Yeah.
You don't know, do you?
What's the answer?
I want to know when you expect to collect the fourteen thousand four hundred dollars-
I just told you.
Over the next calendar year?
When the permits, the building permits are issued, that's one of the things.
I think it's disingenuous and discounted budget.
And what he's talking about is your property. When do you pay?
My goal tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is to get three votes not to adopt this operating budget because it raises the sewer rates, it doesn't hold the constant yield rate. And the reason I'm asking the town manager that question is because I believe in the next calendar year, we will collect revenues from these construction sites in town.
And you're absolutely-
That this budget was presented with zeros there, and then the shift was made, and my water bill's going up, and I'm not happy about it.
What you're, well, what you're doing, what you're asking for is a crystal ball. You're asking for this, for us to project how many homes are going to be built. I have no clue. Do you?
I think we're going to shoot building permits in the next calendar year.
Do you know how many are going to be built?
I don't know the rate at which the developer, they are very aggressive at grading and building the site near my house on Bentley Street.
That has nothing to do with it. They have to put the infrastructure in before they can get a building permit.
But is it really correct in budgeting? Now, if I understand the budget process, because I'm a little disappointed with it, this is my first year to go through the whole process, the budget's prepared by staff, then it comes to the mayor, and you can say, no good, you could kick it out at that time, if I'm not mistaken, but at that time, you approve it for consideration of the council. Is that what happened to this budget?
Hmm, pretty much.
Yeah. So I think that was the first check of putting zeros in that. We missed that check.
There was no missing. There's nothing missing.
Nobody objected but me to the fact that you put zeros on all the new houses for the next calendar year.
You apparently don't understand. That's all I can tell you.
Now, you can say I don't understand. I think you've, the citizens elected a smarter council.
Well, if you, if you stopped interrupting me, I can tell you. If you stopped interrupting me, I could tell you.
Did you hear that one?
I've been studying this. I have called in helpers to help me study. I think that we will collect some revenue on these new constructions.
Absolutely. So why would you put it, why would you put it in there before you collect it?
In order not to raise the water rate. I did investigate-
You know what happens when you do that? Do you know what happens? Because we've experienced that already.
You told me that last month, that you would like to do that. You would, you said, "I don't intend to do that."
What are you talking about?
I asked you this question in a different form last-
No, I don't think so.
And, and you said that we got burnt before doing it.
Exactly. If you put, if you-
Explain how.
Explain how.
Explain why you can't count no cost, no income from all this destruction I have to put up.
Well, if you'll, if you'll let me, I certainly will, but I don't think I'm getting the time.
No, I'm sorry. You go ahead.
Good. We, several years ago, before we had the recession, we were counting housing as revenue coming in, what we anticipated was going to come in. We anticipated that particular year that there was going to be fifty units that were going to be built. In the, and what happened was the recession hit, all that money that we banked on, that we put in a budget, that we spent, we had to go back and dig it out of our reserve because we put it in a budget. It's like going out and taking a lottery ticket and hoping like heck you win to pay the bill. This budget, these budgets, from then on, what we decided to do was it's a zero-growth budget, which means that we pay for every penny that we spend based on revenue.
I think that's laudable.
Well, then why you object to it?
Because I don't think it's realistic this year. I did an investigation on houses for sale in Tony Town in the last month from Zillow. There are over a hundred houses for sale, fifty percent are in foreclosures. You didn't stand and talk to hundreds of people on election day under a bill.
We don't get any money from those.
I did.
We don't get any money from those. You do know that, don't you?
People are hurting.
You know that.
Why did you choose to discount zeros this year?
We've done it-
And people are hurting so bad.
We did it last year, too.
It's been done for several years, councilman.
If you, if you recall, if you recall Councilman Zambetti's explanation that the, the rates have been going up on a slow basis for the last five years in order to bring us to parity with what the costs are in the water and sewer department. Rather than, than straddle the citizens with a huge increase back in two thousand and eleven, the council decided to break this down over a gradual period of time so it wouldn't have any, any, so the impact would be less on each individual, and that's where we are today. The study that we conducted proved that the numbers that we had projected and the revenue that we had counted for had come in pretty true to form. In fact, it came in a little better this past year, and we were able to, to lower our projected increase from five percent to three and a half percent. That's just where we are. Now, if indeed we continue to experience growth, and I hope we do, and we have some new customers come online, that means that the cost in operating a water and sewer facility will be divided over more people. Obviously, that will be a benefit to the majority or to the, to the great people at all. So when that happens, then we can look at the water rates again, and maybe next year, instead of going up three percent, we'll have to go up at all, or maybe it's only two percent. But who knows? That, that can't be predicted, that can't be determined until this time next year, when we have the numbers in front of us.
Let me, let me give you a little analogy of what, that maybe this will better, you'd be able to understand this better.
I understand it very well.
No, you don't. Let's just say you decide that you want to buy a car, and you look at your budget, and you say, "Well, I'm going to get a hefty raise this year." And guess what? And go out and buy the car, and you don't get the raise. That's the analogy of the things. So now you can't afford your car.
I don't believe, I agree with you, and if I might address that. I don't believe that looking at the construction sites underway is as speculative as the lottery.
Yes.
I don't believe it is as speculative.
Well, let me, let me point, let me point something out to you, okay?
I see the town, I see the town under construction.
Let me point to something here. Look at the last agenda item under New Business, okay? What does that say?
Public comment. I hope it's not nine forty-five when he gets to it.
No, the, under New Business, New Business. You see New Business? No, the, under New Business, New Business, you see New Business?
Yeah.
Item number six under New Business. What does that say?
Amendments to Mead Crossing Development Rights and Responsibility Agreement, One-Year Extension of Plan Recordation.
You know what that means?
They want an extra year.
Why?
We're gonna hear about it when we get to number six.
You don't wanna hear about it, okay?
No, we're gonna hear about it when we get to number six.
But that's the reason. Last year, we gave them a one-year extension, all right? If Mead Crossing thought they had a market, we wouldn't have to give them another year. That's part of the non-recurring cost that you wanna spend.
But I think the public learned tonight...
Because Mead Crossing, okay, from when we started this project, if everything went according to plan, and there was no recession, they'd have been out of town now, sold out. Yet they haven't been able to start, because the market hasn't been there. We cannot bank on a market when we don't know what the market is, and the market's not getting any better. And besides, your own buddy, your own buddy Commissioner Rothschild had an article in the paper the other day, complaining about the use of non-recurring money to meet operational costs. That's exactly what you wanna do. You wanna use non-recurring money to meet operational costs, and you can't do that. You can't do that for the reason Henry explained it to you. If you don't get it, you're in debt.
Well, Donald Trump said the other day that things are gonna be a whole lot better once Obama gets the heck out.
I don't care.
So I think the economy's gonna get better.
Hey, you may think, but that's a non-recurring money, you can't use it to cover your budget.
I just wanted the public, who listens to this, we have a reporter in the room, I wanted the public to know that we collect $14,400 when permits are issued, not when the spigot turns on.
We're, we're going to have to move on.
Not when the spigot turns on, when the building permits are issued. I want everybody to know that. So it's not really a straw game to say that we're gonna have some revenue this year.
Yes, it is.
The next item is the Ordinance 25, 2016, the operating budget, we spent a lot of time on that already, does anybody have any further comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, to say a few words if I might. Actually, I'd like to offer an amendment to the budget this evening. We've had a lot of discussion this evening about, positive things about the budget, you know, including the fact that there's zero growth, that the projected water and sewer rate is going to be slashed from 5 to 3.5%, and that the property tax rate itself numerically is not going to be raised, right? And so there is a question, as has been raised in the last few minutes, about what to do with non-recurring income that we might have due to growth. And what I'd like to propose this evening is based on some discussions that we've had in the past about what to do with that money. As everyone's familiar with, we are in a serious situation with our finances, where we can't exactly borrow any more money to account for capital projects, right? And one of the things that we've been considering doing with, with any potential non-recurring income due to growth, is to create a capital projects fund, right? But what I'd like to suggest this evening is that we split any non-recurring income that we have that comes in that's due to growth, by a 70/30 margin, with 70% of this income going to a capital improvements fund, but then the other 30% of the income going to a water and sewer fund, that we could either use to balance against the water and sewer rates, or we can use to balance against our debt. And my proposal would be that, you know, we would add this as a line item as zero to the budget, right? That we would, I would imagine, and maybe Henry or Jay, you could speak to this, about whether or not we'd have to change it on the ordinance sheet itself, but, you know, basically the idea is that with the 70%, we'd be able to demonstrate that we are doing everything we can to ensure that any capital projects we have, such as the sewage belt that, you know, we've been discussing, right, will be able to meet those obligations without having to borrow, but at the same time, that 30% will demonstrate that we're taking a physical, proactive approach to doing something about the water and the sewer side of things.
Physical?
I'm sorry?
Physical?
Yeah, at, physical, by we're actually doing something that's manifesting a plan of action. And, and, you know, I'd certainly like to see that as an amendment to the budget, and I don't, maybe...
I would second amendment like that. Is that a formal motion?
No, we, no voting tonight, sir.
Try it Monday.
Monday night I can come forward.
I'd just like to say that I would...
Actually, I, I don't think it's that difficult to do, simply because, and I think, Bobby Joe's here, I think that's simply adding a line item to the budget with a zero, like we have, and a policy that basically says, that's what we're gonna do with the money. So it's not really amendment as, as much as it is a change.
Okay.
So, yes, it's very, it's very doable.
Yeah, I've got no problem.
And it's just a matter, am I right or wrong on that?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not an inner...
Sure. You're a treasurer.
Something about the, how's the, where the sewer fund going to reimburse the general fund money that's owed also, I would like to see that there as well.
Yeah, somewhere along the way, we owe the general fund 3 million, 3...
About $3 million.
About $3 million. And that may, may play into that, that piece, too.
Okay, so everybody...
Is there any more of a policy?
Right.
A budget amendment?
I agree.
So, so how would we go about, would it have to be like something we actually vote on, or just...
Well, what we would do, and, you know, is add a line item to the current budget that you got, rerun the budget, and that's what you got. And then the policy basically is, you're, you're the policymakers, you know? You just basically, you know, make a motion for a policy on Monday, that you make the split, then it's done.
But are we, are we saying now that we would have 50% go to capital?
70%.
Well, I mean...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bobby Joe just said she would like to see some of that money go to pay off the general fund debt, right? So maybe we're gonna look at 60% goes to capital, okay? I mean, to capital funds. 20% goes to reducing the debt the utility fund owes to the general fund, and 20% goes to use within the utility fund for either reducing rates or reducing debt.
I'd be okay with that.
Is that what you meant, Bobby?
Yes. Something to that.
Something on, you know, that order that would break it up.
Would that be out of the 70, or out of the 30?
Well, it would, it would kinda be split between them, but I, I'd like to offer an alternative to that. I'd like to see 50, if we're gonna be changing it around to account for that third necessity, 50 to the capital, 20 to the payback to general fund, and 30 in the water and sewer, is what I would like to see.
No problem with that.
I'd like to maintain that 30 in water sewer.
I don't have any problem with that.
All right, neither do I. That works for me.
Congressman Fraser, your thoughts on that?
Go ahead.
I think the water rates are too high. I don't think there's any need to raise the water rate based on the current budget numbers. And I don't know whether all future monies should be given away to a capital fund when we were, we had a proposal before, the budget director for the state of Maryland, David Brinkley, to get a million-dollar grant for the, for the, for the belt press. There's $330 million in the capital budget.
If you...
Our senator is now the budget director under Larry Hogan, and if we do an organized, unified approach to approach him in future years, we don't have to necessarily set aside all that capital money when we need to lower water rates, we might actually get a grant like New Windsor got.
Well, the likelihood, and I have spoken to David Brinkley about that when I was at the mayor's conference, and he basically said, he doesn't give away million dollars. What you do is you have to apply it to the appropriate agency, and we've done it, and so nobody's gonna reach in their pocket and give you a million dollars.
How did New Windsor get $2 million?
Well, because New Windsor didn't get any money from the bay restoration fee, because they weren't big enough, okay? So they felt guilty because their water bill was, you know, a couple hundred bucks a month, or a quarter, without even any usage fees.
I think it's naive and incompetent to think that money...
Naive and incompetent, I like that one, don't you?
I think it's naive and incompetent to think that the money in the capital budget is not given out in an applespace on political considerations.
I'm not, I'm not worried about what their budget is, I'm worried about ours.
I think that we have an opportunity to get a grant from our former state.
Again.
You think we don't follow up on that?
When I talked to him, he told me, that is not gonna happen. You can go check with him, if you like.
I did talk with him, he told me how it could happen.
Well, when, you must...
I told that at the one-year anniversary of Larry Hogan being the governor of Maryland.
Why did he tell you that it could happen, and why did he tell me it couldn't happen?
Uh, maybe it's the way you handle him. I love Senator Brinkley, and I've been working in politics, Republican politics, since I was 18 years old.
All right, well, let's move on to resolution.
I want to talk about the budget amendment for a second.
All right.
Okay? I mean, I want to put the brakes on just for a second. Excellent idea, totally doable, and I understand we're gonna add some line items with zeros in the numbers, like the spreadsheet part, but I think we're gonna need to add something, some text language in the actual cover ordinance that directs this, and since it really is gonna be done by policy, and I hate to be too lawyerly, but the deal is, you can only spend money on things when you appropriate it. So you can't appropriate an unknown, that's what we keep saying, you can't appropriate an unknown, and you're saying you're budgeting an unknown, a zero. So the way I see this moving forward is, towards the end of the fiscal year, like next year this time, okay, you'll have an accounting of what do you think you have in excess of surplus, and then you will, at that point in time, follow the policy you're gonna create that says, we're gonna use this, this, and this to appropriate it in the budget coming forward. So if you wanna lock that in, I think what you're gonna need to do is do the line items in the spreadsheet, but then add some text in the cover ordinance that says, the council's gonna create a policy that addresses it, and we can come up with the nice language, but address surplus, defining what surplus is, and then talking about how it would be applied to the three items you said. Because I think there needs to be some more discussion about paying back the general fund as well. I mean, that is a thing that you always have interfund balances, as the treasurer can tell you, but it may not be simple enough to just say, because what numbers are we talking about? 30% of $10,000 is $3,000, why are you doing that at all, paying the general fund back? You know, 30% of the million dollars, well, it makes a big deal of difference. So I think if you create the ability to have a policy with general guidelines of what you wanna split things out, then you can study the policy and do it, if that makes a little more sense. If you lock yourselves in right now, if you don't put it in the ordinance, it doesn't count. You're just throwing numbers out, they don't, they don't really count, so.
And I think what I would like to say is, at the end of the audit, the numbers that show up, not at the end of fiscal year.
Right, and...
It's when the real numbers, because we've been through the audit.
And so you can have a projection in your budget again, I mean, we're getting to something that's gonna happen a year from now, but you can put your projected numbers of what you think it's gonna be, but at the end of the year, and I'm sure we've done this every year, Bobby Joe, that you always have a budget amendment that makes everything right again, because it all has to balance at the end of the year. So what you can do is that, at that point in time, and that final budget amendment doesn't come until right at the close of the fiscal year anyway, and that's how you kinda do it. So you need to enact it now, as Councilman Vigliotti said, but I think the policy's gonna have to be developed a little bit more than just throwing numbers out.
And so to do the policy, we would have to change the ordinance sheet that accompanies the budget?
Yeah, I think the first page, I could come up with something that would be the next, like another whereas, whereas the council agrees, again, you'd have to put this as an amendment, because it was introduced different, so you offer it as an amendment, whereas they develop a policy, and we'll have the, have the legal language that carries out your intent.
Okay.
And I think that's what you're gonna, your amendment is, if you do that, the zeros in the line items will happen automatically.
But do we have to do zero line items? Or do we just take care of that, what, can we stop the, in there, it says, do we take care of at the close of the fiscal year, where it was shown in the financial statement as restricted, non-restricted, and as...
I think, we, we should talk about that. I mean, if we carry it as a zero, then you have something to appropriate it to at the end of the year, if you do a budget amendment, then it's something you can stick into that category. If it's not in there at all, you're not gonna be able to appropriate it by a budget amendment at the end unless you add a new category. I think it's, it's, you know, logistics at this point in time, but the idea can happen.
That's something we don't have to have figured out tonight.
And if you recall, you know, that, that's something that the auditors had talked about at one point in time, and if you remember, about a year or so ago, we created a restricted fund for the parks and recreation money that we get due to growth, okay? So this would follow on a similar line of that, that at the end of the year, when you actually know how much money you have, you can then restrict those funds, and let, and for example, you know, you, you can hold, you can carry that over from year to year to year, too, till you build a fund large enough that you can do something with it. And that's what I had been talking about, that we still need to kinda do, but we're so busy with all this other stuff, from the last budget, and it's not been done yet. So I think this, I think, Joe, you've come up with an excellent idea, fantastic, as a matter of fact.
So essentially, at this point, it's, we're creating the conditions and the policy, and then in the future, we'll actually be getting down to the, you know, the mechanics of it and putting things in, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, very good.
So Monday, for Monday's meeting, so by Friday, so you have it for the weekend, we'll have a red line version of the front page of the ordinance, that you won't see the other zeros, it's not necessary, but a red line of that, and then on Monday, if you wanna do this idea, you need to first make a motion to adopt the budget, and then you can make a motion to amend it based on the red line, you can change that however you want, first vote on that, then vote on the budget.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to Resolution 2016-23 Water Allocation for May. Anyone have any questions regarding that?
I have a comment on this. I'd like everybody to get a copy of this, I don't know whether everybody got a copy of this.
No.
There's a...
This is, that's only in council packets.
Well, it's public data, right? A resolution has to be public, right? Before we vote on it.
Probably over there, yeah.
I mean, okay.
I mean, it's up to people to pick them up.
Okay, I just wanna make it, I wanna make it clear to people listening, that on Monday, when we gather together, we're gonna give out what's called an EDU, which is a allocation of water usage. It says the available gallons per day, this is, I suppose, from Well 7 coming online and other...
No, no.
Well 7, we don't even have a Well 7.
You keep referring to Well 17, that, that's not...
Misspoke.
No.
This doesn't have any, any water from that, is that correct? Is that what you just told us?
We, well, you have to understand, that the way our well system works, is we draw water into the system, and we can't parcel out, you know, this came from 17, this came from here. I don't know, it just comes in.
Just to point a clarity, is it true that you told us we're not using well from the well next to Tonton Baptist Church?
Oh, I never said that.
Then, then, why is it 55, 55,150 is the available gallons? How do we know if we don't use all that well capacity?
It's a cumulative number.
So Well 17 production is in that number, you're telling me that?
Yes, yes, they're all...
It's all of our wells in one number.
In one number.
That's what I wanted to clear up, that they, actually, it's 55,150 gallons, GPD means gallons per day. Allocated Carol Vista Phase 4, 24 EDUs at 125 gallons per day, 3,000 gallons per day. Mead Crossing, single-family homes, 48 EDUs at 250 gallons a day, using of our variable water, 12,000 gallons of it. Mead Crossing Townhouses, 112 EDUs, using 100, using 14,000 gallons of our variable water. Mead Crossing Recreational Facility, 1,000 gallons per day. Then FlowServe has made a request for 3D EDUs, and Meadow Brook Phase 4A has asked for 26 EDUs at 250 gallons per day, for a total of 6,500 gallons per day, for a total allocation, if we enact this on Monday, of 37,250 of our available 55,000. So we're gonna be voting on Monday to give away 55, from 55, 37,000 gallons, only leaving 17,000 remaining. So I don't think it's false or at all disingenuous to say that we're a growing city and that we're going to use more water, and we're going to sell more water, and we're going to collect $14,400 for every building permit to go in the water sewer fund. I don't think... That's right. I don't think, I think I'm not making anything up. I think people want to get a copy of that, and then know who's telling the truth on the council and who's covering things up. I think it's very clear that there's a lot more revenue coming into the water sewer fund.
How do you get, how do you do that? How do you...
Look at it.
Well, look at, does that tell you anything about when, when are you going to allocate that water? Don't you understand?
These EDUs are allocations of actual growth.
That doesn't come, that's not a penny's worth of money, okay?
Not yet it isn't, but this is real. I'm, this is real. This is how, what's going on in your town. This is what's going on in your town.
It could be five years from now, don't you understand?
Let me, let me give a brief explanation.
Can't get into your...
The EDUs that we set aside each month are reserved for the people who have development projects in place in the town, and sometime, five years from now, two days from now, 50 years from now, that water will be assigned to them. The reason we have it on that resolution every month is so we don't give it to someone else. These people have invested, these developers have invested money in businesses, have invested money in the town developing their projects, so we have to assure that there's going to be water here when they're ready to move forward. We don't know when that's going to be. It's indefinite. There's no, there's no clock, there's no time. The only thing that would happen is, if we rejected that, then that, then that water would not be set aside for them. But that's not a very practical thing to do, considering folks want to come to our town and bring new residents and new tax dollars. That wouldn't be a very smart thing to do.
I just brought that up because I believe the emperor has no clothes. The emperor has no clothes. This is real growth, and it's going to go into the water sewer fund. We don't need to raise water and sewer rates. There ought to be a no vote on the budget on Monday. That's all, that's all.
Mr. Mayor?
Obviously, you don't understand, Don. Once again, you don't understand.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask a question. For the three years that I've been attending council meetings, Mead Crossing has been on this allocation for at least those three years.
Right.
Why do we vote on it every month?
So that we know it is set aside when they're ready to come online.
I can answer that more specifically.
You put it on here every month.
It, yes, it needs to be. First of all, if you go back and check every other agenda, you'll find that that is largely the same, at least for the ones that you see in front of you. I would guess easily it hasn't changed in the last year, it may not have changed in the last two years. I mean, these things are basically there because every one of those projects we have an agreement with, that, with them saying, we will reserve that water, and we've negotiated that under the developers' rights and responsibility agreements. So we have to actually hold that water for them. When this changes, if you go back over your other agendas, you'll actually see other things put on there. So if somebody wants to change a use from what it is to a restaurant, or what it is to something that's more water-intensive, that'll go on here as well. And then it is a cumulative reduction. This has nothing to do with actual water capacity that we produce, nothing whatsoever. This is all a book exercise based on the water that were allocated from MDE. The total number of allocation is in the 400,000 range, and we only have 55,000 of the 400,000 to actually allocate out to new growth. So we have to protect that because we're under agreement to do so, and then that leaves us with 17,900, which the reality of the situation is, that is not enough to provide for the rest of the growth that's planned. So this helps us keep in mind that we still have to solve water problems, even though we haven't had any because of the growth. Now, the reason we vote on it every month is we passed a Water Capacity Management Plan that we had to do when we were under consent order with MDE, and that stated that we would watch our water resources very closely and pass a resolution so that it just didn't happen administratively. It actually had to go to the public hearing, public portion of this meeting. So that's why that's done, because in the past, permits got issued administratively, and then you went around and said, uh-oh, we don't have enough water, what happened? So this helps us plan. That idea was so good, and one of our Water Capacity Management Plan was one of the first ones that was adopted, the state changed the law, which used to be old 66B, it's not that anymore, to require all municipalities to have a Water Capacity Management Plan that addresses growth with existing resources, pattern sort of what we have here. So this is why we do it every month, and it is not an option not to give these, to reserve these. We were under contract to do that, so it's not any question about that.
Well, in the interest of a productive coloquy, if we vote on it, what would happen if three councilmen voted no one month?
And at that point in time, I mean, if you said no, and then I'll go with your hypothetical even further, and a developer from Flowserve came in and said, I want my permits, we wouldn't be able to issue the permits. So then Flowserve would come up here, and they would say, you are under contract with us to do that, and we're going to sue the town to get our three EDUs.
Yeah, so that just shows the folly of putting it on the agenda each month. You either have made a commitment to these people to allocate on a single incident, or you have not.
I've explained it, you can read the Water Capacity Management Plan and see it for yourself.
I read the whole thing and...
Then you should understand it, but you don't.
I do understand it. This was to make the point that there is growth coming to fund the water, Water and Sewer Fund. I told you, that's the reason I brought it up.
All right, any other comments on the water allocation for May?
Another minute, another second. Would you please look at Mr. Weprax's report for the month, okay? Would you find that? Because what it says...
I think I will.
It says, "New home zoning issues," okay? That means those are permits, right? In the current month, he issued one permit to Meadow Brook, right? For the total year, he's issued one to Meadow Brook and two to Carroll Vista, for a total of three permits from January to now.
From January, is this calendar year or fiscal year?
Can't be fiscal, because we haven't started yet.
They haven't started new.
This is done on calendar year.
Okay.
So a total of three permits have been issued in calendar year 16, one in the month of April. All right? Now, do you understand that you just can't say we're going to get 50? We got three. I just don't understand where...
We're voting on next year's, not this year's.
Well, again, it's, it's...
What's going to happen?
It's paramount...
It is difficult.
It's paramount on each and every council member to try to understand the policy of the city. If there are situations where you're not familiar or don't understand the policy of the city, you get with our city manager, department head, or myself, and we'll walk you through it.
Well, it's not a matter of not understanding. There's no need to raise the water and sewer rate.
Mr. Mayor?
It's abundantly clear. And I'm going to try to make it clear, before you all vote, to ruin our town by running families out of this town.
I'd like to ask a question of Councilman Frazier, just if I might. Let's, you know, say theoretically for a minute that we do factor growth into this budget, right? Say we factor in 25 houses, 50 houses, whatever, you know, is amenable to...
Three houses would be fine. We, he just said we got three, 14, four times three has already happened.
Well, but we're talking theoretically about the budget now, so let's say we...
Two sources of water, Joe.
Right, but, okay, but we're deviating, we're deviating away from the question, all right?
Joe, make a statement.
So let's say we factor in 50 houses worth of growth, right? And God forbid they do not materialize, but we have allocated money based on those 50 houses, and we've spent that money based on those 50 houses, but they don't show up. How do we make up for the funds that we've spent that we don't have?
The presupposition of such question is that fools invest their money in home development. They would not spend the money they spend to build these houses unless they believed that they were going to sell some of them. So I think the likelihood is very clear based on past experience and on what I see driving around town, that we're going to have funds come in to help, so we don't have to torture people half the day.
I only hope so.
I can understand that perspective, right? But that still doesn't answer the question that, you know, what happens, God forbid, if that growth does not materialize? How do we respond to that?
I want to know more, why the staff is so disinterested in the pain that's going through, families are going through in the town, and why the council is disinterested in it. The people I talk to are about to lose their homes.
You're off topic, Councilman.
Pete Parrish told me in church on Sunday, my daughter solved the water and sewer problem. She sold her house and moved out of Tonton. I don't want that to happen again to me, to people in Tonton.
Joe, the thing that you're talking about, we've already experienced.
Was it 2008, I think, or?
I don't remember the exact, yeah, but during the recession. And when that happened, we, the scenario that you talked about was played out. We had put money in a budget that did not come in and spent it. The only way you can do that, recover from that, is you take it from the fund balance or the savings. And that was a hard hit and a hard lesson learned, and we've never made that mistake again.
I guess it just, honestly, it worries me to, you know, like, consider it...
We need to move on, folks. Let's move on to the next item, is Ordinance 22-2016, Code of Conduct. Anyone have any comments on that?
I think the agenda says that we were supposed to do that at 8:15, and it's 10 minutes and nine, so I suggest we table this until another monthly meeting. I have lots to say about this rotten piece of legislation called the Code of Conduct.
You can make that motion on Monday. Anybody else have any comments on the Code of Conduct? There's some revisions made.
I have a question. Councilman, is there any way, and I know we've asked you this before, and you've said you will, and you never have...
What's that?
Can you email us your concerns, that we can actually review them and have a discussion with you, so that we understand individually where you're coming from with your concerns?
I would, except I disagree with hiring a new staffer to work downstairs among the clerks. I voted against that.
So because of that, you're unable to email your remarks to us?
I disagree with having an IT department for $165,000. My email does not work. I've made multiple requests that my email would work, and my account email does not work. I got an email today that says they get a default when they send me an email at town. I've asked for it to be corrected. Our website says that Diane Foster is the representative for the Rexon Parks. I've been the representative for the Rexon Parks for over a calendar year. So if you wonder whether or not things are being deliberately overlooked, you can look at those two things. You can't send me a town email, and the town website is still wrong about whether I serve on the Rexon Parks. So maybe that's the answer, Brad, people can email me. Maybe that's why you're not getting emails from me.
Did you get my email today about Diane Foster being away?
No.
I sent it to the town. I sent it to the town.
Did you get a bounce back? Did you get a bounce back?
I didn't get a bounce back.
Councilman, I don't think Councilman Wance was trying to insinuate anything or say anything negative, he was just genuinely curious about your perspective on things.
He says stuff like, and you never respond to us. That's not true. We've talked many times by email. We learned in marriage counseling, if you want to have a peaceful marriage, you don't use the words "never" and "always," because it's not true. It's not true that I never respond to Bradley emails, Wance's emails, and it's not true that I'm always negligent, or I'm always absent, that we've heard tonight at the council meeting.
Let me make another point, Brad, besides the one you just made. This is not the first time that Code of Conduct has been on the agenda for discussion.
I just thought it was often that.
Please, okay? This was up for a vote, for approval, or disapproval, last month. It was discussed at the workshop the Wednesday before the meeting. There were no comments. All comments were incorporated except one. So the only change made between what was discussed a month ago...
And all liars shall have their part in the Lake of Fire.
You mock me once more, okay? You do that once more.
I have lots to say, and have had lots to say about the Code of Conduct we're about to discuss.
You had your chance a month ago, and you didn't do anything a month ago. Now, all of a sudden, there was one change, everything was agreed to, the one change has been made, now you want to go through the whole thing again, and you want to put it off another month. That's all you're doing since you've been here. There's been no progress, and we've wasted time.
We've lowered the water rate.
What, done what?
You wouldn't have come away from 5% in 3 to 3.5% if I had not been elected to this council.
You got to be kidding me.
I've been criticizing the Davenport at the senior center when I ran for office, and through the entire year, I've been criticizing you. I'm a success in lowering the water rate.
Okay, you're right. I give up, okay? You're not going to change? You haven't improved in a year? There's just no way in the world...
We have a different view of what the job of government is.
Yes, we do.
I don't think government should grow, grow, grow and control...
Your look at the job of government is to do what happened to Flint, Michigan, where they ended up to do on the cheap with their water, and they ended up with lead in the water, and they got, I don't know how many thousands of people sick? Or you want to do what Puerto Rico's doing? Not paying your bills, not paying your bonds, so you go bankrupt.
The town is flush with money.
Let me...
Councilman Frazier. Councilman Frazier.
In FY11, okay, the assessable tax base for this city was almost $50 million more than it is today, okay? Do you realize that? And the only increase we've had is because of Creekside and some houses in Tonton, where our assessable base went up, I don't know, 1.8 million. But we're still $50 million behind FY11. So don't tell me we're flushed with money, we're not. Only in your mind are we flushed with money, because you haven't spent any time doing research, you haven't spent any time before, before you were running for council, you were never in this building, you never once attended a budget hearing, you never once attended a budget meeting, none of them, none. And then even after you ran, you haven't, you didn't do any research. You supported Joey, okay? And in that two-year interval, you didn't do any research to find out why the water and sewer bills are what they were. You just kept saying, I'm going to reduce them, I'm going to reduce them, I'm going to reduce them, even though you find out you can't, without going into debt more, because you even said it. I can reduce them, but if we have to do something else...
I think the homonym characteristic attacks are unfitting, befitting of a council.
It's not character attack, it's your actions.
I think that perhaps a motion to censure people for saying stuff like that would be in order. What do you think?
We can make all the motions we want to on Monday.
I don't know anything, I don't understand anything, I don't do anything, I don't attend anything. These things are not true.
I, I'm afraid that Councilman Frazier is again wrong. Parks and Rec Advisory Council, Bob Mitchell is the Parks and Rec Director, and Donald Frazier is the council liaison, right on our website. I don't know what page you're looking at, but it's there.
Last week, I'm wrong.
Oh, last week.
I didn't look this week, because I have a computer problems.
Yeah, okay.
Brad Wance was by the house to fix the computer today.
All right, any other comments on the Code of Conduct?
A different...
All right, we're moving on.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I had just one.
All right.
On page four, under L, Implementation Guidance, the first part of, or the second part of the first line and the first part of the second line, the grammar, I think, is inconsistent. It says, "Employees of the city are public employees, they still have certain..." and I think there's a word or two missing there, maybe?
Right.
And that's it from me.
You should probably say however.
However.
However, they still have certain protections.
I'm going to make a proposal, Mr. Mayor. There's some, the copy that we were given first has been changed, and the colors are different, so this is, changes have been made in this month's packet. I would make a proposal on page four, number F. Elected officials, though compensated, are not considered employees of the city as discussed in this act. And I'm going to make a motion on Monday to put that sentence in. It's absolutely outrageous to treat elected officials as employees and put them under the authority of the town manager for Code of Conduct. Absolutely outrageous. We did not elect Henry...
Does that do that? I don't read it that way.
It says, "The city manager shall do this, the city manager shall do that." It's absolutely outrageous to do that.
The Sheriff's City Manager has jurisdiction over all the employees.
I'm not an employee of the town. I'm compensated because I'm an elected official.
I think that's what that said, I thought. I read, I'm reading the wrong one.
The typical test on that one is, do you receive compensation?
That's right, I'm a compensated...
Do you receive benefits?
I don't know.
You do?
I don't, didn't get anything on that.
Yes, you do. You get a retirement.
I didn't know that. What is it?
You sign the form.
What is my retirement? I make $135 a month, being on the council.
You still get a retirement.
$135 a month, is what I mean. I don't, that has to be offensive when somebody says I don't read anything or do anything.
Excuse me, before...
I think we're not on the track.
Hold on. Before we get that far, those of us on this end of the table...
Back to the code of conduct, folks.
Right. Councilman Frazier, on this end of the table, we're not seeing what you're reading off of this. Can you give me a little more definition of where we are?
On page four...
Yes.
You'll notice that the color's different on the copy percentage.
Okay.
And I want to add...
The reason we tabled it yet last month was to make these corrections.
Right, but I, I understand. But where, where are you reading about council members being employees? Because I don't see that on here.
I don't see it and I want it in here.
Oh, you want it in here.
Now, I want to add to the, this ordinance, elected officials, though compensated, are not considered employees of the city as discussed in this act.
What does that mean?
So what you're trying to say is you don't have to abide by the code of conduct?
It's outrageous to put me under...
Yes or no?
Not the provisions that give the city manager the right to make me not speak.
It's kind of, kind of...
That's not in there. Kind of...
We show it, or that is.
Okay. We have a couple, this is going to take a long time. I have a lot in here, okay? The code of conduct...
I don't have to be balanced the way it's...
Another issue that's going to have to go to referendum if they pass it over, the objection of these constitutional issues. The fact is, officials shall not attempt to organize priorities of the department head. Then it goes on to say, "All requests for work, staff assistance, or research should be directed by the city manager." These things say that I can't talk to an employee. I can't talk to the head of the Public Works Department. I can't talk to David Brinkley. I can't talk to anybody. These, it says, "The city officials must avoid interfering or directing a city manager's method of carrying out the council decisions." If I don't agree that Henry Irons is doing a good job, I have a right as elected official to say so in a public meeting.
Well, that's fine. But you don't interfere with what he's telling the people.
You don't tell the employees they don't have to do what the manager says.
What possible reason would you want to adopt this unless you were targeting an individual trying to silence them?
No. You're taking this way too personally.
It's not personal. I'm not going to be on the council long. I'm not going to be on the council long.
Councilman, I hope you're on the council for at least the next three years because you were elected here.
I don't believe I'll be on the council for three years. I believe that future council minority members will be under grave threat. You're ripping apart the structure of the democratic government and I'm going to speak up about it. This, you can't not put the public officials under the thumb of the city manager with a...
Nowhere in this document is that a crap. Nowhere does that say...
Then I would say you do not understand it and have not read it. Because I've just read your three passages. I have more. Where it gives the city manager, it says, "When representing the city on official business, officials shall not speak negatively of the city or any city officials, employees, contractors, or vendors. Furthermore, said officials shall behave responsible in the manner as to project a positive image of the city." If I think it's bad that 100 homes are being sold and 50 are in foreclosure, I'm going to say it to the top of the roof, trying to get recalcitrant members not to raise the water rate.
We don't have, we don't have anything to do with that. At all.
What?
We don't sell homes. We don't foreclose on homes.
No, you didn't hear what I said. There is a crisis when 50% of the homes sold are in foreclosure. You didn't talk to the citizens. I've been walking door to door, talking to citizens. I'm walking door to door...
You think it's any different in any other community?
That, I think it's different because I don't think other city councilmen have a city councilman like me that's willing to work so hard and walk door to door and talk to citizens.
I think it has something to do with the worst recession since 1929. I think that's probably the primary thing it has to do with.
I don't think so. Not if you listen to the cries of the citizens that came to speak tonight, but you're so behind time, it's 9:05. You would not agree to me to put this off for another month. So we have to go through it because it's the only opportunity. When I was elected, Joe told me...
If you have something to say about the code of conduct, please say it because we've got other agenda items to cover tonight.
This is a code of conduct for employees, not a code of conduct for officials. I could support a code of conduct for employees.
They already have that.
Nothing in that document says anything to do about employees. It only has to do with public officials.
I can never support a code of, it just, what you say is in error.
Just, just for a moment.
A lot of power is given in this document to the city manager to restrict councilman's speech.
No, I don't have anything to do with it.
I don't think you wrote it. I'm not accusing you of writing it.
You apparently didn't read it or understand it.
I went to the, today, I went...
You will have a vote on Monday night. You can, you can vote any way you want.
But not before you vote will anyone in the public get a chance to speak about this. This is important.
They'll get a chance. Here, what does it say? Public comments pertaining to agenda items, tonight.
If we get out of here before midnight, will I have a time to do that?
Here, right here. See, right there.
The longer you talk, the less chances that's going to happen.
But that's after you vote on Monday. That, Angelo, that's dishonest to say that.
This is today. This is today's agenda.
The open comment on Monday nights is always after the vote has occurred.
No, it is. See, you...
I've been on for a year and that's the way you've done it every meeting I've been to.
For the last three, or two or three, we haven't done it that way, in case you haven't noticed.
I certainly am noticing.
No, you don't. Because they get, right, what is that, son?
Stop saying that.
What does this say? Read it.
It's at the end of the agenda.
Of what?
When I was elected, Joe told me, "Monday night meetings will be easy. We just vote on everything and the meetings sometimes last less than 10 minutes."
What agenda is this for?
A quote from you, Joe.
Councilman Frazier, what...
Is that date? Is that May 4th agenda? I'm telling you.
Councilman Frazier, what I was referring to was meetings where we had one item on the agenda, such as the water allocation resolution that required minimal discussion. And so it did not take long to get through that sort of a thing. So I'm not sure why you're bringing me up or what that even pertains to.
I just, my impression, having watched these and talked to you, was that Monday night meetings go quickly and there's few people come to council meetings.
They used to. When did you watch them?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read one, one thing that will just maybe put some things to rest. Just this one section of language, if I could. Aldermen may not direct the work of a director or employee of a department. An alderman who violates this prohibition is guilty of misconduct in office and is subject to expulsion from office. This prohibition does not preclude an alderman from submitting an inquiry or request to a department director or employee of the department. Further, aldermen shall have such administrative and professional staff and consulting services may be provided in the annual budget. Now, that's in the charter of the city of Annapolis. In the charter of the state capitol. So they have a provision that in their charter says, "Aldermen, who are council people, cannot deal with directors or employees. They cannot direct their work." That's simply what we put in this, same type of thing. They can't direct their work. It further says if they do, they're guilty of misconduct and subject to expulsion. Ours doesn't even say that. Ours just says that if you violate this, you're subject to the penalties as the council deals with. So this isn't a novel concept. This exists. It's in the city of Annapolis charter. So the issue that I was prepared for you guys to talk about tonight was the two sections that, that Councilman Sam Betty brought up, which was on page four and page seven. We didn't talk about them and I assume, I guess you're okay with it. If you have any questions, you can, can talk to me. But those sections did not match. The implementation guidelines did not match. So that's why section four, on page four, F, talks about personnel matters. And now that matches it a little better. And page seven deals with the statutory protections that you have about legislative immunity and things like that. So that's why those two were clarified. And those are the only changes that we were directed to make.
Okay. We have still pending the annexation resolution 2016-001A.
I don't think we should move off of this if you're going to vote. Are you really going to vote this in on Monday?
It will be up for adoption on Monday. If we choose to...
Well, then we have to go through it.
If we choose to accept it or not.
I think it's very unwise to railroad this through with the concerns that I'm raising.
Railroaded. We've been talking about it for four months.
No, no, we haven't.
Yes, we have.
No, no.
I think we have.
It's been part of a package of bills all submitted in a single month that were, and I protested to the money being spent of the lawyer to sit and write pieces of legislation that have to be gone, to be appealed to referendum. These are bad bills. They should never have been written by the city of Tontitown. All people know that one councilman cannot promise anything, Mr. Mayor. All councilmen, all people know that one councilman cannot promise anything. If you want to say, "I'll do my best to make something happen" to an individual councilman, that doesn't threaten anybody. Why are you prohibiting that?
Where, where is that, Councilman?
You're prohibiting implementation guidance. When officials engage in conversations with residents or business owners. I do that. That's my job as a city councilman. Owners or applicants, developers or lobbyists, or officials of the other government agencies, they should be cautious not to make representations or promises that they cannot legally keep or make or keep. Further actions of the legislative body cannot be promised or predicted with certainty. Individuals do not have the authority to make commitments on behalf of the city unless expressly authorized by the body that they are a member.
And what's wrong with that?
I think that it's, I think that this does not...
You think you should?
No, I don't think that this needs to be in an ordinance that you can then fine me between 50 and $500 if a majority believes that I've done that. You lie about other things I do. Why in the world wouldn't you come up like your stupid, stupid recusal thing? Why wouldn't you just come up with a false charge? Convict me, maybe charge me $500. If this passage, you can charge up to $500 for every infraction. That is not, doesn't go to the Ethics Commission. It goes to the town attorney.
No, it doesn't.
It says in here that the council should review.
Really? Show me exactly where that says.
I'm going to try to do that.
I will wait all night until you show me that.
Can you show me where that?
You said it. It's not in there. So you show me where it is.
I could use a little help on that. I, I have that highlight, most of the things I want to talk about highlighted. I do have the fines highlighted. I have the city manager, city manager, city manager, city manager, city manager highlighted.
We'll find counsel in there for me.
I was going to propose that this, that any proposed infraction of the, of the code of conduct go to the Ethics Commission and not to the council. Not to the, not to the lawyer. I was going to propose that on Monday. Some enforcement, I believe.
Okay.
What else do we have to say about the code of conduct?
Well, no, I, I want to hear a resolution to this, Mr. Mayor.
I want to see where it says that.
There's no resolution.
Well, I, I understand, but in what he's...
I want to see it.
What they are saying is completely false.
Right.
They...
Read, I'm asking the citizens to read this bill before Monday. "A written statement alleging a violation of code of conduct by elected officials shall be submitted as a resolution to the mayor and city council citing the persons involved in the events surrounding the matter." I don't think that's what should be happening. But that should go to the Ethics Commission, not to the...
Where did it say it's going to the attorney?
This resolution, let me read. This...
It's not what he said. I understand that.
This manner of, after discussion with an opportunity for the elected official who's subject to a complaint to address the matter at the meeting, which I don't think is proper, that's not the way. I have a right to a jury or my peers. Where the resolution is discussed, the city council shall make a finding in the matter. It is found that a violation has occurred. The city council shall, by motion, impose a penalty of not between 50 and $500. Penalties which are imposed by the city council shall be a fine, a written reprimand, or a censure, or other penalties by the charter or city code.
So you do realize that...
So you're going to have, you really wrote a law where these people, three of these people can fine me $500.
Yeah, I was directed to do that law, right. But let's go back to your issue.
That's a law.
You understand that council, C-O-U-N-C-I-L, is not me. That's you all, right? You understand that? C-O-U-N-S-E-L is the attorney.
I do understand that.
Okay, so...
That's condescending and inappropriate.
Well, actually, you just accused...
Say that to me.
Well, you actually just accused me of saying that I make the decisions. I asked you to point it out to me. You read a section of the code. It nowhere says the city attorney, city council, city anywhere. It says city council, C-O-U-N-C-I-L. So I'm asking you, you brought me into it. Where am I in it?
You wrote this.
Where does it say that?
He said city council. He meant that one.
No, he said city attorney. So I mean, that's the deal. He said the attorney. Of course I wrote it.
Okay.
That's his job.
I know.
That's not what he said.
He's totally responsible for it.
Right.
May I ask a question of the city attorney and the council at large as well? Perhaps it's not inappropriate to make this have to be approved by a supermajority of the council?
That'd be better. That's a good idea.
You can have whatever rules you want. As I told you at the last meeting, these are rules for you to govern yourselves. It has nothing to do with anyone other than you. It doesn't have anything to do with the employees. It's just among yourselves. So if you want something done by a supermajority, it can be a supermajority. However you would like to do it.
I'd be okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'll offer that as an amendment on Monday as part of this.
I just think, Mr. Mayor, just inclusion on this. I think it's a terrible, hasty graffiti on our law book to put in any statute that would allow, allow the majority of council members to fine another member.
Supermajority.
50, maybe, 50 and $500. What scrapping and fighting Mrs. Cook we're going to have when they have that authority?
So, Councilman, you're, you're basically in 3A enforcement, third line from the bottom. Majority be changed, supermajority.
That's correct, sir.
What foolishness is going on on the city council in Tontitown?
All right. I'm telling you. Now let's move on to annexation resolution 2016-01A. Any update on that?
The hearing's going to be at your work session in June.
Very good.
Great.
Let's move into the city manager's report. Henry, what do you have for us tonight?
Well, let's start with the good news. And the good news is, is that the INR upgrade is basically done. We have a 30-day process test that was completed on April 21st. We're awaiting the test results. We don't expect any problem with that. There is a punch list with a couple of items that need to be done. But I see that by the end, by next month, we will be pretty clear of that. We'll be getting into closing the project.
Henry, this, this makes our wastewater treatment plant one of, if not the best, in the state.
Second.
Yes.
Yeah, we were used as a pilot program for the entire state with our technology.
So we now have a wastewater treatment plant that meets all the requirements that the state has put on us. And we intend to maintain that.
The thing that sometimes we forget, you know, we, we have a relatively new wastewater treatment plant built in 2000. And then these latest upgrades bring us to really the cutting edge of environmental protection and protecting the bay. So we should be proud of that. Other jurisdictions will soon be required to follow the same guidelines that we've followed. So it's, it's a matter of time before all of us are doing our part to keep the bay clean.
If I'm not mistaken, we're still paying for the old wastewater treatment plant.
That's right.
Oh, yeah?
Those bonds have not been paid off yet. It's still part of our debt.
I suggested we use the, instead of putting things ahead for the future spending in capital projects, that we use that money to pay down debt.
And, and then when we have to do capital projects, we'll go into debt some more, right?
We just heard that you can't, you borrowed so doggone much, you can't borrow anymore. So if that's true, that the previous council, the man sat here and the other people here at this council borrowed so doggone much money, they cannot borrow anymore, then why shouldn't we pay down debt?
You could always borrow more, my friend, and your water and sewer rates are going to be okay.
What was said earlier was false. That's what was said just at this very meeting.
No, he said, "We don't want, we don't wanna borrow more," okay?
Know that you're maxed out on that.
We're off track. Henry, what else do you have for us?
Well, the water billing system, uh, the implementation is, actually should say May and not March. I went, I put M-A and it jumped to March. Um, the streets, the Mia grant, um, we're expecting that to be completed by the middle of this month. And we're still working on the capital project, uh, both, uh, the capital equipment and the, uh, capital projects that we need to do. And it's a twenty-five-year plan. Just a reminder, and I sent everybody an email, and that, uh, Don, did you get that with Kraus?
Yeah.
Right? I thank you for that. That was very helpful. Thank you, Mary.
Thought Gmail wasn't working, I was just checking.
No, you sent that to my personal email that I don't use for town business.
No, I don't send that to sit personally. All right, anyway, Kraus said eleventh, eleven, was it eleven?
Thirty.
Thirty, yeah. I wasn't sure, I thought we said eleven. But anyway, eleven-thirty, there's gonna be a proclamation that's gonna be given. Um, and, uh, at this time, and I'd like to take some time to, to address some issues that involve quite heavily the employees of the city. I wanna address the letter to the editor that was submitted by Robin Frazier, wife of Councilman Frazier. It is clear that Robin does not have a clue what the job of the city manager entails, as she has no municipal experience, has not been in the city's office to observe the city operations. Therefore, her assessment is unsupported. As city manager, I'm responsible for two budgets, the general budget and the water and sewer budget, which totals six point eight million dollars. Since I have responsibility in each budget, and it makes fiscal sense that my salary be split in two, this is true for the public works director, the public works director assistant, and several other employees that work fifty percent of their time in parks and streets, and the other fifty percent in water and sewer. This year, more than fifty percent of the city manager's time and the treasurer's time was spent in the water and sewer budget because we had to research and answer questions that were presented by the Water and Sewer Committee. Additional time was dedicated to the upgrade of our wastewater plant, preparing a request for proposal for the water billing system, evaluating the water billing system proposals, and researching the dead battery is, issue. In addition, fiscal, and an additional fiscal reason for putting expenses where the money is generated is that when we borrow money via bonds, the bond investors want to be sure that the city has the means to pay back the loans that are issued, and we have to demonstrate that. As for, excuse me, I think I have the floor. As for the purported salaries of two employees that work ninety percent of their time in the water and sewer fund, the tasks that they do clearly indicate where they belong. Their duties are, number one, answering the phone calls and dispatching them to the proper people. That's ten percent. Water and sewer budget, that's ninety percent. What they do is they import the water data into the water billing system, run reports to identify high and low usage, print the water bills, deliver the bills to the post office, receive payment via front desk, mail, and processing credit cards, rerun of the late water bills, dispatching public works personnel to get rereads for high water and low water readings, final readings that are for transfers of property, workmanship, ownership, rather, create work orders for the water and sewer repair. I'm sure I missed a few tasks that they perform, but clearly you can see where the majority of the work is presented. Harassment of city employees is what this letter contains. And the harassment continues. During the primary election, a flyer was passed out by Donald Frazier, Robin Frazier, and Catherine Adley. On the front of the flyer, it said, "Why is your water and sewer bill going up? Look at the back of this page, you will not believe it." On the back of the page was a listing of all city employees and their salaries. Although the salaries of the city employees is public information, this release of information was done in a malicious manner. This again is harassment of employees. The message that this flyer sends to the public is that the salaries of the employees are the only reason for the rate trading, rate increase. The salary data was given to Councilman Frazier because he said he could not understand the salary breakout in the budget. The employees are distressed that you would harass them and use them to advance your objectives. Twenty-eight percent of our employees live and work in this city. Can you imagine the embarrassment and anxiety that our employees are experiencing? Not to mention that the police officers are being ridiculed for working for such, for working for the city of Conneetown for that pay, and already being recruited to leave with promises of higher salaries. And at this moment, I report to you, we are losing one now. The truths, the non-truths, ambiguous statements, innuendos that are in these documents are revolting. And it continues. I received an email on Monday that emphasizes the unscrupulous tactics that are being used. The mayor read that to you earlier. I won't do it again. Despite the social media, flyers, robo-requests for citizens to write to the city, city's email address, and call with demands to lower water taxes, the lower, lower taxes and water and sewer rates, we received six emails and two phone calls. Thank you for your attention.
All right, anyone else have anything for Henry? All right, any comments on the departmental reports? Anyone have any questions or comments? There ain't nothing. How about the legal report? Jay, what do you have for us tonight?
Two items. The Ethics Committee met and reviewed the financial disclosure forms. You can see, we started those forms, they were due at the end of February, and the first time that only a quorum could meet, three of them could meet, was last week. So it takes a while for them to get together, and we need to keep that in mind when we start crafting future legislation, that they just don't meet and they have hard times getting together. The best news is that everybody who was required to fill out a financial disclosure form did so. They were all reviewed, all were, uh, complete, and all were reviewed individually, and we only had to send out three letters for further information or clarification. And, um, my understanding is those letters have gone out and the information has come back. So, uh, we're okay as far as financial disclosure forms. Next year, we need to make this process quicker. They're due in January, and we need to have them done by February. They also reminded me that, uh, they had directed that quarterly updates of those forms are due, and we're already finished the first quarter, which would have been March. So we're gonna wait until the conclusion of June, and then you'll get the quarterly update. Remember, the quarterly update is a form that we're gonna send saying, "Has anything changed on the financial disclosure form that you filled out? If, if no, sign. If yes, fill out the changes on the form." That's already required under the law, but nobody ever updates theirs, so they want affirmative announcement that they do. The second thing they did was they said that they're ready to start, and their goal is by the end of the calendar year to have the financial, uh, campaign finance forms. Remember, you passed the campaign finance law, and the Ethics Committee is the one that has to approve those finance forms. Uh, so they said they want that target to be done by the end of the year, so there's no question of what they're gonna be when the new calendar year starts as an, as an election item. So that was the Ethics Committee. The second item under my report is that we need to have a closed session for real estate. Uh, we need to have it Monday, because I don't think we're gonna have it tonight. Uh, it needs to be advertised, but on Monday, we need to have it. You can decide whether you wanna do it before the meeting or after the meeting, but it has to happen this week, this coming week. We can't wait until June, we can't put it out. So if we're here till midnight on Monday, we still need to have the closed session if you waited. So you can tell me when you wanna do it sometime, I'd like you to tell me now so we can put it on the agenda and advertise.
What is your, what is your anticipation as far as time this'll take?
It should only take about a half hour to do this. Uh, we're gonna have one other staff member attend with us, and, uh, give you the idea of what we're talking about, and then, you know, ask for direction. So I say we do it before the meeting.
Sounds good to me. Anybody else, anybody wanna get out to the meeting?
Should be.
Councilman Frazier, are you available before the meeting on Monday?
My attorney has advised me not to go into meetings, uh, closed meetings with Jay Gallow.
Guess she won't be there, then.
Why? Does this have to be a closed meeting?
It's for real estate. And if I explained it, it wouldn't be a closed meeting.
Can I have an attorney present?
No. And as far as you're concerned, your attorney as a councilman is me, just so you realize that.
No, I've had to hire an attorney to defend myself against the talk to the city of Conneetown. I've been accused of things I've not done.
Uh, that, that's irrelevant to the meeting and the closed session, but as far as your role as councilperson...
It's not irrelevant to Councilman Frazier. You should not do that.
I'm just telling you that I'm the legal advice for the city of Conneetown, including the council people.
You told me out on the street, you only represent the majority.
No, that's not the correct. I am direct...
You did tell me that. You're saying you did not tell me that after the last meeting on the street.
That's correct, and it wa, yes, definitely. The last meeting, I wasn't even here, so that's true.
The last meeting, when we talked on the street?
The last time we talked on the street, I told you, I am directed...
The last time we talked on the street, okay.
I am directed by the majority of the council is what happens. That's how it works. That's how I take my tasking orders. Back on subject, we need to have a closed session. We need to have a real estate before the meeting or after the meeting. You can vote no if you don't wanna go into closed session. You don't need to attend if you don't want to, but...
Well, I'll miss a meeting. If I miss a meeting, I'll be kicked off the council. You just gave yourself authority to do that.
I guess you have to weigh your decisions, don't you?
Why do you want that much power? That's what I wanna do.
I have no power. I'm just telling you, we need to have a closed session. Period. If you don't wanna have a closed session, then you all don't vote to have a closed session. If you tell me you wanna talk about it right now...
Closed sessions, been burned a couple times already in the last calendar year.
Well, the state law allows the government to close meetings for certain reasons, and one of them is real estate. If you tell me you don't wanna do it, and you wanna do it in public session, I'd be more than happy.
Just answering Brad's question, that's all.
That mean you're not gonna say?
I just asked if he was available. Unfortunately, that created a platform that was entirely unnecessary.
Okay.
People don't know what you've been doing behind closed doors.
That's the purpose.
What have we been doing behind closed doors? Would you please tell us? Since you seem to know, we don't.
If you pass the Code of Conduct, I won't be able to talk about anything that happens in the city council or among the employees.
What do you mean? No, it says...
This is bad law.
When you're doing official business, when you're acting as Don Frazier, I don't care what you do, okay?
No, you do.
Nobody cares.
We may need more than a half hour.
Hey, hey, Councilman's just not answering the question. So do you have any problem with meeting before the meeting?
I'm good.
All right, so everybody else is okay with before the meeting? Is that true?
Yes.
It's the seven o'clock PM for the...
Let's do seven o'clock on...
You'd be restricting it to the property.
Or should we do six-thirty?
It always is restricted to the issue that we said. I wouldn't let you discuss things otherwise.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Six-thirty or seven o'clock?
We have to have the whole discussion and have a decision, so however long you think you guys can limit your discussions.
Can we do six-thirty? Can you make six-thirty?
I can do six-thirty.
Let's do six-thirty.
Councilman Frazier, I know it's, it's against your attorney's wishes, but I do hope that you could attend with us, please.
I think Jay's right. If he announces, I think he just told us the way the process works is that if he announces a purpose, that's the only purpose can be done in the meeting.
That's the way it always is, and that's the way it always has been done.
That's helpful. Thank you for that.
So, so you're available six-thirty on Monday?
I made a note of it. I'll have to check the calendar, and I'll try to do my best to be there.
That's not material. Everybody, it's a kind of a jury, right quorum it is, so we'll move forward.
All right, what else for us, Jay?
That's all I have.
All right. The sex, next item is unfinished business, and it's one item that's been on the docket for several times, and I asked to have it put back on because there hasn't been a resolution, at least to my satisfaction, and I believe the satisfaction of many of the citizens. We had a lengthy discussion about the fact that, uh, we restricted parking during street sweeping days, and it was difficult for folks to remember that. I completely agree with that. I think there's a lot, there's too much on everybody's plate nowadays to worry about one day per month, uh, whether your car is parked or not parked. I would make a proposal, and I would, I'd hope somebody would introduce this, uh, on Monday night. If not, we don't have to do anything, and it just stays the same. But my, my big problem is seeing that this, this regulation, a resolution is, is enforced so early in the morning. I would propose to change the time and, um, sweep our streets between nine and eleven, rather than between five-thirty and nine, or whatever it is, or eight. And, um, just simply not issue the parking tickets until, uh, most folks that go to work have gone to work, and, uh, just move the time up, just to accommodate a wider range of people. If you don't wanna move the, the, the time up, then I would propose that, uh, we simply don't enforce the parking and post signs saying that we do have restricted parking on street sweeping day, but just simply not enforce the, the parking violation. That would be the lesser of the Plan A or Plan B. That's Plan B, and I'd rather not see that. Our whole goal is not to fine the people for not moving their cars, but our whole goal is to keep the streets swept. And that can be accomplished at nine o'clock as well as it can be at five o'clock. So I would like to, like to, um, reintroduce that on Monday night as, as an action, and, and, uh, again, you, if, if, if no one introduces it, or no one has any changes to it, then it just stays the same. But I, I've, I've, I've heard from a number of people on street sweeping day that, uh, this is a real burden, and I, and I completely agree. I just, 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 folks have too much on their plate in this day and age to worry about one day a week in any, any given month, remember to move their vehicle.
Mr. Mayor?
Jim?
I'm...
Go ahead.
I was, I was just gonna ask, uh, with your option A about changing the time till later in the morning, you said we would not issue parking tickets until what time?
Well, until whatever time we decide. I would say between nine and eleven would be a, would be a reasonable time because there'd be, that's the time where most traffic is off the road, and, uh, most folks have gone to work. In addition, none of the downtown businesses are open except for the bakery or the Country Kitchen at that hour.
I don't believe the bakery's open on Mondays.
Well, and that's, that's true. The bakery's not open on Mondays, so scratch that off the list. Just the Country Kitchen, and they've got parking at the police station for free. So I don't see that it's gonna, gonna affect the, the business in any way. And I think that, that, um, outside of, uh, getting a buddy assistant together where everybody calls a neighbor and tells them to move their car, then I don't know what...
One of the major problems with the nine to eleven is that you're not gonna get any enforcement because the police are working the schools.
Nine to eleven?
No, but they're working, you're gonna issue a ticket, it's gonna be before nine. Okay? Otherwise, you know, why do it? Right? So you're looking at the timeframe before the street sweeping, and at that time, our police force is busy, uh, maintaining the, uh, the streets around the schools.
So make it nine-thirty to eleven-thirty.
Why, why do we, why are we even doing this? Okay?
Well, I...
We're getting ourselves in deep. We, you know, we could either not do any street sweeping and save a couple of bucks.
I'm leaning that direction.
Or we can just say, you know, we'll sweep and we won't enforce anything, we'll take the signs down. Or another option is...
That'd be very appropriate for you to say something.
Another option is that, uh, you know, we, we have any block that doesn't want their street swept to sign an agreement with the city that they don't want it swept, and then we won't sweep it. We're, we're getting ourselves in deep when we start switching times. We're putting the police force at a, in a contradictory spot where they may not be able to enforce it. So we're enforcing laws and not enforcing laws?
It gotta, gotta A and B then.
I'd rather do away with street sweeping.
I actually agree with you, um, because, and that was it. The main issue was the, was...
I'll let, I'll let Judith speak, if she identifies herself...
Judith Archie?
Since, since she brought this to the council attention first, that's the only reason I'm...
And that's, I just wanted to just throw in there that we don't, you know, it's, it's not an issue with the time changes or anything like that. There's just several houses down there, and I know that they probably looked at the maps and seemed to think that there's plenty of parking. There's just several residences that don't have off-street parking. Um, over there by the crow's nest, they've got two new renters in there. They're not allowed to park in that driveway because that's part of the business. So they have to park in front of their house, and they're in the middle of the block, so the only way they can, you know, park would be to walk all the way down to the back. So we even thought if you would just give us a month or two, you know, if you're so worried just about the way the town looks, and just give us an opportunity to prove that not sweeping on that side, you're not gonna notice a change. It's still gonna look good.
I'm really not worried about that section of the streets being swept. I'm worried about the downtown section.
Well, and that's the thing, is, is if you leave the time the way it is, you can get your downtown area done. If you even just stuck to where the meters are, you know, then it would serve that purpose. I, I don't know what the rest of the town looks like. We were only speaking for that side. You know, we just, it was just those houses that don't have off-street parking. I, I, I know there's just a few on the other side.
The, the debris that piles up in a month is amazing.
And I would, and I do agree with you, but we...
Cigarette butts alone on this corner...
Right, on this corner.
Or ankle-deep.
Which would be, you know, where there's no parking anyway. So we can continue to, to sweep there. We're just saying that we're willing to take upon ourselves on that side of town to take care of our own street. If you would just be willing to give us a month or two to prove it. You know, if it doesn't work out and you wanna do it again, fine. We have started calling each other and knocking on each other's doors and trying to remind each other, but, you know, it's hard when they just don't have any place to park. I've offered up my driveway to a couple people now that I've moved a couple cars off property, you know, the trailer and everything, so...
Well, thank you, and...
Just something to think of and about.
I, I brought it to your attention in an effort to resolve the situation. We need to definitively do something about it, or just simply not do anything about it, and that's our statement. So Monday, be prepared to offer something.
I think I can give Angelo that...
I'm, I'm going, I'm, I'm all for it.
I think Judith just brought up a good point. If we do it where the meters are, okay? We don't have a problem, apparently, with over-parking. Then we can do it, we can sweep from where the meters are, all the way downtown and out, because once you get past the meters, there's no parking on the street. So we'd be able to sweep as, as much as possible. And just as Judith said, forget about that side of the square.
Well, maybe the simple solution is just do our street sweeping and let it be what it is. And if people are in the way, they're in the way.
No, no enforcement, take down the, take down the signs?
No fines, take down the signs.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I keep saying, don't, don't ask us, okay, what you wanna do.
I just told you what I wanted to do.
Because you're gonna, no, 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 what you said was, come back Monday...
I can't make the motion.
And make a motion, and you can do it any way you want, right? No. If, if you guys at the city say this is what we wanna do... No. If, if you guys at the city say this is what we wanna do, do you guys agree? That's different. But you're gonna get four or five different opinions if you ask us what we think you should do, okay? I mean,
Well, again, I told you what I wanted to do. I gave you Plan A and Plan B. If you don't like Plan A or Plan B, come up with Plan Z. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Well, but I think we ought to decide tonight so that we have something in writing for Monday as to how we wanna approach this. We can't just come up with it Monday and vote on it Monday. That's not right.
Councilman Sambity, could you elaborate maybe a little bit on the idea of, say, a neighborhood or a block signing some kind of an agreement with the city that says that they don't want their, their street to be swept?
Yeah, but the more you think about it, okay? The only people you're really talking about are the people on that side of town. You know, on the West Baltimore side.
And, and less they, unless the word might get around that, well, the folks on West Baltimore don't have to have their street swept. Maybe the folks on York or Frederick don't want theirs swept.
They won't get it either unless they got a meter in front of the house. We'll only sweep where there's a meter, because then there's no cars to block. We got downtown clean, okay? Which is what your major concern is. The cigarette butts on the corner, that's taken care of, because there's no parking there. So we can do this everywhere from where the meters end out to as far as they go, because there's no parking beyond Country Kitchen. So that, that might be a workable solution.
Yeah, 'cause the, the other options that would require an ordinance change and sign, the cost of changing signs as well.
But this option would just take, all we do here is take the signs down.
Basically, it's a contract. I can direct the guy not to do that.
And then we take down the signs.
Or sweep, you know, basically, you still do the same.
You don't have to tell the contractor anything. You just tell him to come in the street to sweeps, and if the does the same thing you'll do now if there's a car in the way, he goes around them.
Right.
Nothing changes.
Okay. It still requires a change, because down at Judith's end, there are parking signs, right?
They have to come down.
They have to come down.
Right.
So
We'll keep
The ones on York Street or Frederick would have to come down.
Right, and that's just a matter
Nobody reads them anyway. They might as well come down.
Well, I'm just saying, it requires taking those down, and that's, that's, that's the simplest.
So then are we looking at keeping the times the same, obviously, and we'll actually, and we will enforce it in the areas where there are parking?
Yeah. The only difference would be, you know,
Just where they're doing it?
Well, the street sweeper, the way he works, is if there's a car parked there, he goes around it. He doesn't care whether they got a ticket or not. You know, so it's, they're like, I've always basically tried to, it's, they're two independent things. One is the contract with the street sweeper, and the other one is with the police department enforcing the parking. Now, if we take the signs down, then he just still does his job, as the mayor says, as he would. That, he don't, he don't know or care about the ordinance at all. He just, when he sees a car, he goes around it.
Would you be, would we be willing to do that even at the metered spots? Just take all the signs down?
No.
Ah. Then you don't, okay.
No, I mean, would you be willing to do that?
Well, taking all the signs down then means you have a ordinance on the books that, for no purpose.
Well, we'd have to change it.
You'd have to, you know.
But, you know, do we wanna make sure we sweep downtown? I would say yes.
Right, I say, if, if you're gonna take the signs down, then just cancel the street sweeping, because all the cars will be on the road.
No, wait a minute, let's clarify. I'm talking, I'm only talking about
Right. He proposed a hypothetical.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Well, but you'd have to do more than that, Tom. You'd have to do it on York?
Well, yeah, wherever there's no, yeah.
Yeah.
We're only, I'm, you know, where there are no parking meters, the signs would come down.
I have a question about that contract. What, what liability is in that contract when there are cars on the street? Obviously, they want the cars to not be there. If they hit the car, who is it on? The car owner, us, or the contractor?
I either have it here or downstairs.
Okay.
Let me see if I brought it with me.
'Cause I imagine that they want the street empty of cars, probably for their own way of getting out of the liability of it.
And it's quicker.
Well, absolutely. And we get a more thorough job that way. I wanna make sure that we're not putting people at risk.
I don't know the liability on that. I can, I can
Bobby, Jim, you have an answer to that question?
No, just have a question. I hear clean up, clean up the city, but isn't the other purpose of street sweeping is for the water and sewer going to a waste park treatment plan?
No.
Okay.
Well, there, there is an element that I know what she's talking about. Part of, part of the NPDS permit is you get what's called credits. And we did check into that as far as what we get. And Glenn Edwards responded, and I can tell you that, you know, it's while no credit is received if MDSHA sweeps your main street, and I don't know how, you got confused about who's doing the work. The city could possibly be acknowledged, but no TMDL formal credit would be received. Okay? But how that, that formula is the, the miles that you sweep times the frequency that you sweep. In our case, that's 26 miles annually, and back and forth here 12 times, and it's, it doesn't come up to anything that's measurable as far as money is concerned at all. Although, it's what they call management best practice.
If you're able to provide an answer to the liability question prior to Monday, I would be very interested to find that out. I don't wanna put residents at risk of liability by having their cars there.
I, I can get it to you by Monday, or if you care to wait, I can go down and pull the
It's not that urgent, really. But if you can email all, email all of us that information,
Sure.
That would be great.
Will do.
Now, we're gonna ask the staff to come up with a statement that we can vote on Monday night? And what do we propose that statement?
One from column A, one from column B?
No, I mean, do we want
Taking a trip?
Just the metered spots washed, uh, cleaned? Or do we want it so that everybody will be clean, but people outside metered spots don't have to move their cars?
All we're doing is directing the city as to where to take down signs. Is that correct?
That's it, really. If, if everything stays the same.
If that's all we're doing, that's fine, right?
Yep. I don't, I don't think we need anything in writing for that purpose.
You're not gonna change the time, and you're not gonna change the enforcement portion of it, then the, then the enforcement
You should change the time. That, that's, that's something that, that is very important.
I, I, okay.
I would recommend that you do that.
I didn't, well, then you're gonna have to tell me, 'cause that's not what I heard. What I heard was basically, we're gonna keep it the same, except the, the signs would come down.
If, if you're gonna have the most efficient use of the contract for the street sweeping, should be delayed till later in the morning.
Then we have to change
Whether you, whether you take the signs down or not, I don't care.
Well, you have to.
Whether you have a fine or not, I don't care.
You're concerned about taking the signs down? I think
I, I'm not concerned about taking the signs down. I'm concerned about the fact that if we continue to do it at the time that we're gonna do it and we don't enforce it,
Then it's like not doing it at all.
Then like Brad said, we're not going to get any, it's not gonna be any benefit, because people will be parking there within two months. They get back to their old habits, and they'll be parking in the street, and there won't be any done.
Aren't you concerned?
But what, what solves that problem is simply human nature. You come in later in the morning. In other words, that street sweeper and the police work for us. We don't work for them. And we tell them when we want the street swept. When everybody's going to work, the carbs are clear, and they come in and they sweep the streets, and, and we've solved our problem. We've, we've got the street cleaned streets, and we don't have to worry about hassling people about silly fines about forgetting to park there. 'Cause they're always already going to work.
But don't you see, the reason for the early times is because it's before business hours? Isn't that concerning, Mayor, yet?
No, there, I mean, if business hours aren't effective.
And have a block of time you can't park there during the, during the business time, that's not a good thing?
Well, there, there's no businesses open downtown on Monday.
On Monday.
At that early in the morning, other than, other than the
Consider that. If you move into the middle of the morning, I think street sweeping in the early morning makes sense.
No, I mean, that's fine. I mean, that's just my opinion, I guess.
Well, changing time makes other changes. And, and the changing of the time is the ordinance. And I forget the time on the ordinance, sorry, it's, now, but it's it's put, as, as Angelo said, you gotta have it in place before you sweep. You want the cars gone before the guy comes in. So at a minimum, you would have to change the ordinance to do from 8:00 AM till whatever, 'cause you're not gonna start street sweeping till nine. And then that would be a change in the signage as well.
My main, I've got two main concerns. My first main concern is if we stop hassling people with these silly fines, that's my first main concern.
Well, then
And the second main concern is, then we get our streets swept. Those two things
They contradict.
Continue need to be, need to happen.
Well, as I see it, they contradict.
Why do they contradict?
Well, if you want to get the streets swept, you gotta get the vehicles moved.
And you have to give them a reason to want to move their vehicles.
I gave you a solution. How to solve that problem?
What's the solution?
Move the times. Simple as that.
And don't move
Why is that difficult?
I, I don't find it difficult, other than the fact that, you know, the other things that need to be in place to do that, that's, you know, again, signage and ordinance.
That's why I brought it up tonight.
And no enforcement?
And no enforcement? Where?
Didn't say no enforcement. I just simply don't care if there's enforcement.
Well, you're really gonna, I, I'm Nope, not going there.
You know, I don't wanna force the police to start paying overtime, because they've got people tied up in the school, in the school districts and
I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, come on. We're, we're not gonna move those guys. So I'd say do it nine to 11 and don't enforce parking, and take what you get.
That's Plan B.
To me, it's, you know, and after a year or so, we see how it goes, and then we just drop it. 'Cause we're not we're not really cleaning the streets anyway.
Well, one last comment, and that assumes that there are no, no businesses that'll ever be open on Monday.
Is it possible, and, and Brad, I'm gonna borrow a page from your book. I think you know where I'm going with this.
Oh, geez. You're gonna abuse that, aren't you?
I'm, I'm gonna. Is it possible to do a provisional stay of enforcement? To do a test run to see if it works? Angelo started this. He said, try it out for a year. Is, is that possible?
The, the only problem that is
Anything is possible from, from up there. I've learned that over years. Anything is possible.
I'm really sorry I brought this up.
I think we have to give the staff some guidance as to what
True guidance.
we expect to vote on Monday. And they can write something, and we can either say yes or no. That's fine, too.
Option A.
No option. That's what we want.
All right.
That's what the city will
Thank you for your consideration.
Well,
We'll get something figured out for Monday.
I was gonna say, I
But they've gotta, they've gotta submit something to us to vote on, not ask us for what to do.
We can submit something to us to vote on, Angelo.
You will?
Submit something, and if they wanna amend it, they can amend it.
Well, I'm out of that one.
All right, let's move on to new business. Monthly financial report. Anybody have any questions on the monthly financial report? Hearing nothing. How about the accounts payable? Anybody questions on the accounts payable?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I noticed that on 331, $44,934 was spent on a purchase of a 2016 Ford F-350 from Hendrich Fleet Incorporated. I know we've, we talked about a truck, but I didn't know we were gonna spend $44,934 on a brand new F-350.
This is last year's budget.
Yes, they are.
That's a large number. Uh, is that something that the town voted on? I mean, the town council voted on?
Yes, it is.
Just in the bypassing a budget or specific?
No.
Now, wasn't that at the retreat that we discussed that?
We talked about a truck.
That's last year's budget.
Oh, oh.
We got another truck coming up next year.
This is, what we're seeing here is, we're in the current budget. This is the one you passed last year.
This, so
fiscal year 16.
Right.
It says, check voucher registry from 329 to 430. So this was just, this money was just spent.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know, but it was appropriate, it was appropriated in that in the budget.
Also, on page three, the Potomac Edison bill for Whipple wheel drive is $10,231.82. So the electric bill for the sewer plant is $10,231.82. And last month, I think it was about $9,000, if I recall correctly. Also, the KTBS payroll, what, is that a company we hired to do our payroll?
That is?
It is.
You assumed right.
The monthly payroll is $48,000, and the tax liability $21,000, for a total of $70,7190 for one month for payroll. I'm concerned about this. I've been running small business since I was in, in my twenties, and concerned about adding additional employees. The, is the, on page eight, the $12,293.36, is that tipping fee? It says Carroll County Commissioners receive $12,293.36 from us. Is that tipping fee we pay?
Page eight.
Probably.
Do we pay that separate from what we pay Hughes?
Absolutely.
So we, they submit a bill, and it has it itemized, or it's two separate invoices?
Two separate.
Two separate invoices. It looks like it's a, since it has two different check numbers, it looks like
Two different organizations.
Right, and I had made the point that it was germane that the commissioners raised the tipping fee, and was criticized for doing that. When they raise the fee, this number will go up, right, immediately go up, and as a separate payable. I, Angelo mentioned that we are helping, or maybe it was you, Mayor Jim, that we paid $41,160 to the bay restoration fee for just one, the first quarter of the year. I think that's a large contribution from Toney Town. I was so discouraged to see Montgomery County and Prince George's County try to steal our, our highway user funds.
We really don't have any choice or required to do that.
Yeah.
They're not related.
They would put me in jail if they didn't pay.
Oh, I know that, you're required to do that.
Take you home.
We can be proud of that, I think. Those are a couple of things I wanted to bring up for the voters to understand that went on.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Next is the renewal of the lease of the Catholic Charities facility, or our facility, the Catholic Charity Hughes's had at the Roberts Mill Park. Anybody have any comments? Do you wanna make a comment on that?
It's annual contract that we've had for approximately 10 years at least.
Right.
Year-to-year contract.
No changes from the last
No changes, right.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Next is the review of the City of Toney Town fee schedule. And that's in your packet. I guess that's anyone makes any suggestions of raising or lowering any of those fees, it's time to do that. Is that correct?
It would be correct.
Can I ask a point of order, Mr. Mayor? If it says, review of the fee schedule, does that mean it's an action item on Monday? To adopt the current paperwork we got in our packet?
Yes, unless we wanna make a change.
Just wanted to clarify that under new business, that, that you're planning on moving
Do that each year.
That paperwork on Monday's meeting? If that's the case.
We do this every year.
Right.
If anybody has an opinion, they don't have much time. If anybody has opinion, they don't have much time, and so I just wanna make, just clarify that. Thank you for that answer.
Then we have, we have a release of the Antrim Mini Storage Letter of Credit. I trust that's the last piece?
That is it. Many years of building, two phases of projects, everything is in order from our end, from the county's end. Everything is overwintered already, at least one season, everything is in order. So, their letter of credit can be released, and so on Monday, you need to vote to release it.
Good.
It's been long haul.
I can't even remember how many years it's been, yeah.
Next is the amendment to meet Crossing Developer Rights and Responsibilities Agreement, allowing for a one-year extension, for another one-year extension, I guess, for, for plant recordation.
Right. What we have, as you know, and I'm only gonna give it one minute here, so we have some background and some facts, is the Meads Crossing Development out here on 194 has received all its approvals from the Planning Commission many years ago. There's been a lot of time and effort invested in the stakeholders to make the plan come to reality. And Phase One has been approved, the plans have been approved, and they are not been recorded yet, because to record them would then lock them in, and they would have to build and keep continuing to build through their review process. So, what was agreed under the Developers Rights and Responsibilities Agreement, and they were the first agreement that we had, we call them the DARAs, that was the first DARA that we had, and under that agreement, it said, "You had so many years to deal with this." And that time expired, and we needed to extend it. We extended it last year. They asked for a two-year extension, but we said that we wanted only a one-year extension, figuring that we would want them to come back, and we could see where things are. The end of May is the deadline, so if this extension is gonna be granted, it needs to be granted at Monday's meeting, and that what you have in there, it has to be done as an amendment to the DARA. So, you would approve this amendment to the DARA, and it just basically says they have another year to record their plans, and...
The consequences if we don't do that?
The consequences if you don't do that, their plans expire, and they would have to go back. The consequences to the city would be disastrous, because all the growth you all have just been talking about and planning on would not happen anytime in the foreseeable future, because they would need to go back, resubmit their plans through the entire process, and while that may seem easy to do, it's very expensive and onerous, but the biggest problem is they would never be grandfathered under the 2010 Stormwater Management Regulations. So, therefore, they would now have to comply with the new regulations, which would change the entire development, change the site plan, and basically cause the city more problems, because there is a regional stormwater management pond out there that they feed into between them and Meadow Brook that was designed for this. So, if they don't feed into that pond, we're gonna have additional stormwater management that's gonna need to be maintained, in addition to the pond that's not gonna be used to its capacity. So, this has to be done, you certainly could not do it, but the consequences to do that are grave, and all of the development that we've talked about planning on happening would not.
Anybody have any questions on that?
I think it's promising, since they've come back to us with, you know, the redesign, and obviously, they're itching to get in the ground. I see no reason to not give them another year, just to make sure all their ducks in a row, before they record plots.
It, there is no reason not to do this. If we even hesitate to do it, it sends the message to the, because these are developers, right? They put the land together, they're not the builders who build the houses. It sends the message to the builders that we're not supportive of it, and then they won't be able to sell the project, and it just is a trickle-down effect, it's disastrous.
Right.
Thank you for explaining that.
I have another new business item that I'd like to, before you go into public comment, were you about to move to public comment?
I'm not quite there yet, but getting close.
Thought you were.
I was gonna ask the question, is there any other new business to come forward with?
That's, I thought you were gonna do. Thank you. I think that it's inappropriate to, to learn from the packets I get that $44,934 was spent on a new pickup truck, and I learned that, and I'm expecting to vote on it on Monday. I'd like to make a motion on Monday to reduce the authority of the town manager from $50,000 on expenditures, without bringing it before the council to $10,000. I wanna see what's going on in the county. I think the voters that I met at the polls are mad, and they wanna know what's going on in Tonti Town government. They wanna know where their pool money is, that they contributed years ago, I heard that over and over. They wanna know where the money's being spent, and I think it's inappropriate to learn about acquisitions, and then get a day or two to react to it. I think that all these agenda items, and this town, when they go, I think the town manager should be able to spend $50,000 without talking to us.
Again, you, you...
Well, I don't have that authority.
This way, Matt, I know you don't.
Well, I heard from a recent meeting, you said you did have that.
Don, just think about what you just said.
Cruiser was bought.
Nothing can be spent unless it's approved by council here.
No, that's not true.
Well, that is true, yes, it is.
No, no.
Because this, this expenditure, that $44,000 truck was planned for when this council, you weren't here because you weren't elected yet, examined the 2016, 15, 16 budget, and said, "Yes, we need to replace a truck at the, at the utility department, and we'll allocate funds to do that." Well, that, those funds were just spent. They, they were in the budget, and it was planned for, and we carried through on our budget plans, just like this year. We approved it, buy another truck, and you approved that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, it's coming up. You could, that's right, you can take that out, I guess, but that's in the budget. That's, that's, that's where this stuff comes from. We just don't simply say, "I want you guys to buy a new truck." It's gotta be approved by us through the budget process. That's how it works.
Yeah, I think the voters wisely elected me, because they believe what I believe, that the elected officials should run the, the government, not the appointed bureaucrats, the employees of the, the council.
But we do.
And so, I want to see these expenditures that are being made come up for a vote. I want them to be...
They did.
Well, I want, I want these projects to come up for a vote.
Councilman, how many voted?
They are, they do.
Say, we passed a budget last year, and then he has, like, we heard from the other day at the meeting, you said, "We need a new, we need an engineer." You said, "Well, I'll hire that engineer, because it's within my budget authority." Well, I didn't get a chance to review the, the applications, or get a chance to do that. I think it's really important for democracy that the councilmen, you know, like us, you can vote us out. I don't think you should be able to kick us out, but you should be able to vote us out. And so, I'm concerned about the $50,000 authority that's given to the city manager is too great. It's too large an amount, and it's resulted in mischief in my year on the council, and I'd like to correct it on Monday by making a motion.
What was that last statement about mischief?
It's mischief.
There is no evidence of mischief.
What's mischief?
Zero.
I was forced to vote on things.
Incorrect. You were never forced to vote.
Do anything.
Well, it came up, and I could abstain, like somebody, but I, that's not my job. My job is to vote on things on the agenda.
Okay.
And I, I was forced into a thing where we exceeded the authority. That's how I learned it was a $50,000 authority given to the city manager. Not happy with that.
Would you please explain it to him again?
I don't know, he's a whiz.
I thought I did. No, let him retry it.
I lack, losing confidence in the management of the town, and I don't...
Let me, let me, let me ask.
I don't, I don't want that kind of authority going on behind closed doors.
Are you accusing me of something?
No, no, I'm just generally think...
Sounds like it to me.
I'm increasingly unhappy that you can't see why it's wrong to raise the water bill, and why you can't see...
It's not me that's doing it, you still don't understand, it's happening there, not here.
You said, "I don't understand." I know when we're being raped, and the citizens of this town are being raped, there's no need to do these things, and I want the council to vote on progress.
You not understand that the power is there and not here? Do you have any clue about that?
The whole country...
Apparently not.
I encourage the voters to read the Code of Conduct Bill, they'll be appalled.
What the heck does that got to do with the purchasing here?
We're increasing the power of the town management over the elected officials. We don't wanna do that. It's dangerous to do that.
But I, I wanna get back to the accusation. You're accusing me of misappropriation?
I'm not following this conversation at all, I think we need to...
Misappropriation?
How did you come to that conclusion?
What you said.
What did I say?
Misuse.
Mischievous.
Mischievous.
I said, "I have increasing concern about it."
About the mischief.
About mischief in the county government. For example...
This is not the county, first of all.
I'm sorry, the city, the city. You caught me in an error there. Isn't that wonderful?
Well, you know, it happens a lot. It happens a lot.
Maybe you can censure me, yes.
Not my authority to do that. But, there is a limitation that the city manager has as far as spending power. That's $25,000. I don't know where you got the $50,000 number from, but I guess...
I was told...
But by who told you?
This meet, one of these meetings.
Who told you?
That the reason we had to vote on a $53,000 expenditure was because it exceeded the $50,000 expenditure that you had...
Who told you that? Who told you that?
That is my recollection of what I learned when I came.
Who told you that?
I can't recall.
You can't? That's funny. That's funny how that works.
Well, it, so you're telling us now you have $25,000 authority?
Everybody else knew that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a proposal to the...
And let me tell you something, what you're talking about is money that's in the budget that was authorized last year.
Yeah, but I want to vote on these projects.
You don't vote, you did, you're not, you weren't even council when this was, when it was...
And that, I wasn't council, I haven't been council long, only a calendar year we learned from Brad.
This is your first budget.
It is. I'm not, I'm concerned about the budget.
This is your first...
I'm proud of myself to walk door to door about it.
Oh, yeah, okay. Anyway, the only thing that happens on my part is the, the purchase order, it comes through, and then mayor even signs that. I don't sign that.
So, you, is your authority checked by the mayor's signature?
Well, what do you think?
I don't know whether or not you have authority to spend that without his review. I don't know.
I sign every check that goes out of this building.
And if you say no...
In most cases.
That's the way it is, right?
I, I, typically, it's Bobby Joe and I that sign it.
Some others do have two signatures.
I look at every check.
They all do, they're not valid without his signature.
It's two signatures, two signatures are required.
Well, I wanted clarity on that. You've helped, talking about it helps the public know what's going on down here. There's a great deal of concern in the public. I talked to hundreds of people in the last couple of weeks. 220.
I believe that. If, if you talk to millions of people and tell them your side of the story, and not the side that everybody else understands, that's what's going on.
I don't know why you don't take the data I have from my, my interview with so many people recently, as data that you should use for your decision-making. I, I've, I've done a lot of work figuring out people feel. It's good that I do that.
Okay, yeah, right.
All right. I hesitate to do this because of the late hour, but I'm gonna take a few public comments pertaining to the agenda items, and this has gotta be new public comment. It can't be a rehash of what we've already talked about. If you have a new idea, or something new to add to the conversation, I'll be willing to listen to anybody that wants to speak, but because it's so late, I'm gonna restrict you to two minutes and three people, so who wants to go first?
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, may I speak real quick?
All right.
Earlier, there was a statement made accusing council of trying to destroy the city. Councilman Frazier, do you remember saying that?
I didn't accuse the council of trying to destroy the city.
You did.
I'm concerned that, that you're passing a Code of Conduct ordinance...
Okay.
...that restricts my ability to speak. I think it violates my First Amendment, and my responsibility as an elected official.
Right now, you're violating mine by talking over me when I'm trying to speak.
I don't think, I think that's accurate. I don't violate your rights by talking.
Councilor, why don't you send us the floor?
You accuse this council of trying to destroy the city, and here's what I have to say to that. This is my city. I was born in this city, I was raised in this city. The imports who come into the city and try to change it into something that it never has been and never should be is outrageous. What you don't understand is that this is my heritage, that you're accusing me of trying to damage.
Laughable. You should, you should read, read my bio on the website.
I read it.
If you've ever read it, I have two relatives buried in the cemetery, and I promised a doctor from this town. I know a lot about Tonti Town.
I don't care how much you know about Tonti Town.
Why do you say it's your city? I think it's not. I think it belongs to the citizens here, and you're to represent them. It's just as much their city as it is your city, Mr. Lance.
You're exactly right. The fact is that I have a claim into this city as I was born here. What am I talking about?
Yeah, you're glaring at me like a wild man.
What I have vested, the, the life that I have vested in this city, and you're gonna ask what I'm talking about?
Yeah, why, what are you talking about? What are you talking about? I don't have the right to do my job as the city manager.
I never said you don't have a right, but you don't have a right to accuse me of trying to destroy my heritage.
I have no accusations, I'm talking about concerns I have.
All right, this is, this is not adding anything to the conversation.
See how much conflict there is.
All right. Two minutes on new items that have not, that were pertaining on the agenda.
Wait, before you start my time, I'm just confused about a procedure. I mean, I agree totally that you let somebody come up and speak after a thing, I think we all should be doing that, but are people supposed to sign in only if they come, do public comments, or if you...
Sorry? If you get up to the microphone, you're supposed to sign in?
I'm confused about your procedure. It seems that...
Golly, you've done that a lot. I figured you'd know it by now.
Well, no, because this young lady came up to speak, and nobody asked her to sign in, nobody knew who she was, had asked to have her introduced.
Well, I asked her to identify herself.
She didn't sign in. I mean, do they...
I said I was gonna do that, when you said...
I gave her a special exemption.
Do people only, I'm just, do people only sign in when they're doing public comments?
I gave her a special exemption, because she brought this issue to council before.
Thank you, you've clarified that.
This is a previous issue that she brought to council's attention.
You've clarified that.
All right, so, is that, was that your comments?
Well, no, you've clarified the procedure now. And I agree, I wish everybody could talk when things were being presented. I do agree that she spoke after, when it was on the agenda item, and I wish that everyone who had something to say could speak after each thing that was on the agenda, instead of waiting to this and being put down to two minutes.
We had people wanted to talk tonight, and they had to leave because of the lateness of the item.
Right, so...
Right, I think you've got, like...
No, that had nothing to do with me, it's just...
I wanted to table the Code of Conduct for another month, but couldn't get an agreement from one other councilman to do so.
Okay, are you starting me now?
Yes.
Okay. I think the Code of Conduct, I hope you all got your digs in pretty well tonight, because if you pass this on Monday, you and you both violated your own Code of Conduct. You're, it says right here, "Officials," that's all of you, "will treat each other, each other," I haven't seen that happen tonight, "city employees, residents," I'm a resident, "with courtesy and respect in a manner that reflects well on the city." When you watch this tape again, I don't think you're gonna see that you treated me, that that you treated me very well. I'm lucky I didn't see Councilman Frazier get slugged by Councilman Zambetti.
Almost happened to none.
Right. And then you'd be violating this also. So...
No, it didn't. Just for your information, it didn't.
Anyway, it's my time.
Wow. Angelo Zambetti acts as counsel.
I've got sore fingers, okay?
Gentlemen, she's on a timer. Please let her speak.
It's my time. Anyway, there was name-calling. You insinuated something. You may not have known, there was a third woman there who was getting this petition signed. So if we go to 499 people came back, I mean, I don't think I'm that influential on my own. So this Code of Conduct is, it's duplicative. There's plenty of law that cover it. It's government overreach, way government overreach. It's a waste of taxpayer dollars. It gives unelected officials too much power, particularly the city manager. There's an appearance of impropriety, which is the same with the charter amendment for removing elected officials. There's an appearance of impropriety with all of this legislation, because it looks like you are targeting a particular councilperson by a majority to remove somebody who was duly elected. As I said before, you can't do that. It violates every Democrat. You'd use democracy to preserve people's rights, not take them away. Councilman Lance, I will applaud you for at least having an appearance of wanting to know what's wrong with this. And I will try, I will try to send you an email, because the supermajority is, you're beginning to wrap your mind around a little bit of what's wrong with this.
Anybody have one? Council, have any remarks to add to?
No, sir.
Ms. Adelaide's comment? All right. And who's next? Robin?
Hi. Robin Frazier Bentley Street. Sorry, I was too late to comment on the budget, so I'm going to do that now. The 2016-17 budget increases government spending, and it is really a shell game, moving funds from the general fund to, shifting them to the utility fund, spending the $329,000 in the general fund. I mean, if you wanted to give the taxpayers a tax break to make up that difference, that would be nice. But you really increased the spending by $329,000. I heard that the utility fund is now standing on its own two feet, but you did it by knocking your citizens on their butt. And they've been telling you that for several years. Joe sort of ran on the lowering, trying to lower water and sewer bills. Don and Mr. Rogerson ran on that, and the number of people who came out to vote just about doubled each of those times. So it's an issue where the people are trying to tell you, "Our water rates are too high." And I think in this year, when you did not have to increase them, it's only because of that shift that you had to increase them. You could have waited to shift those dollars until some of these houses were built, even if it takes five years, and so that there's more people paying in. And you could have kept, held, at least held it to an amount that they're already saying they can't afford.
Thirty seconds.
And I have heard from more people in the last couple of weeks that they're moving because they can't afford the water rate. Some people so mad, they couldn't even talk to me. You know, nice, young couples with a couple children, four people, spending $400 or a little bit more quarterly, according to Mr. Zambetti. $100 a person is about right, but according to them, they can't afford it, and they're moving. So I encourage you not to make that shift, not to increase the water bill this time, and to listen to the people. Thank you.
I'd like to speak to Mrs. Frazier's comments, if that's all right. I do not understand a city council that will not listen to reason about building a pot facility in our town and won't revoke that letter. And I do not understand a city council who will not hear from all these citizens about how much they're hurting because of the water bill, when you don't need to do it. He that knoweth to do good and doeth it not, to him it is sin.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yes, may I? You've asked, and you said in your letters in the newspaper, "Why now? Why never before?" For this to have happened last year, they would have had to increase the rates even more than they did. So why now? Because now it was able to be done. And what it makes me think, you're incorrect. It was able to be done finally. They could stand on its own. It makes me think, why don't we wait a few years? Well, maybe if the commissioners in the past would have taken action, we wouldn't be closing three schools in the county right now.
Yeah, I tried to do that. I tried to close them. They need to be closed. Enrollments have declined. We're going to be down to 22,000 kids when we can hold 31,000.
All right. Anyone else have any comments?
Bobby was in the minority too, like I am.
Anyone else have any comments? All right. We'll take one more.
Mr. Mayor, one, could I comment on hers? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As Henry reported before, there's been social media activity, Facebook reports asking, "Join my army and come out against water and sewer rates." There was a robocall where somebody tried to use, I think, his position, where he announced that I'm councilman, Tawny Town Councilman Don Frazier, running for, to be your representative at the Republican Convention, and "Come and join me at Flix and help me reduce the water and city rates, sewer rates." That was your robocall, remember?
I'm proud of it.
Okay, that's good. You're proud of it.
We had the highest turnout at Northwest Middle School in history of primary elections.
Will you let me finish? Okay?
It's ridiculous that you allow that. You said you were in favor of stability.
Hey, has the floor. When he's finished, I'll give you a chance. You just talk over everybody, Don. That's not polite.
Somebody's got to speak up about the ad hominem attacks.
You guys, what, did you not do that? Did you not have a robocall? Where you announced that you were...
Watch the video, folks.
That you were councilman? I mean, you know, you did that.
Yeah, we're trying to get the information out, so people know what's going on.
Okay, but he said, didn't he not say he's running for delegate?
I don't know. I didn't make...
He did, to the convention.
And what's wrong with that?
And he said, "Please come out to my rally at Flix and help me reduce the... Help me reduce the water and sewer rates." You're right.
I wouldn't come, and I wouldn't vote for you. You're so funny. You guys are so funny. This is democracy.
What I'm trying to say is, and be quiet, but you've gone out, I don't know how many times, requesting the city and the hundreds of people that he's talked to to complain to the city about the water and sewer rates.
They don't exist, do they?
You have done that, okay? I think your Facebook got two members in the Army, one from the Philippines and one from Baltimore. And I don't think there's any more of those guys. Henry said he got, what, six emails and two phone calls? Where's the hundreds of people that you talked to?
That's what. He said this before.
And that's all he got. He can prove it to you.
That there's nobody mad about the water and sewer rates.
He can prove it to you. No, you, I don't want to hear that one. You got 500 signatures about what?
About the voters.
About what?
Voters.
Why won't you listen to the people about that?
For what? What's it for? And you don't know about his salary either?
Well, we learned about the salary just this month.
What did you learn?
We learned that the city manager makes $91,000 a year.
Do you know the city manager gets no benefits from the city?
I'm upset by that number. My opinion, Mr. Mayor...
Do you know that?
Is that no Tawny Town, small town, single employee should make more than the median, more than the median family income in our town.
Well, then you, never mind.
That's what I believe. I don't think there's any expertise we get for the extra $35,000.
You know, if we had, if we had a little bit of time, I would ask...
We don't have any time. It's 10:30.
Our city manager and our council to tell you what their qualifications are for the job they have.
I know. You are spending like crazy. I can't stop it.
Why even offer credence to such a silly statement? Why would you even respond to it? We need to move forward.
Barbara Lickinger, what I'm hearing tonight, I think, is a personal vendetta against our city manager. I've seen many city managers through here through the years, and a lot of them didn't last very long. I think Henry Hines is the best one that we've had since I've been in the city limits. And another thing, on a national level, you hear the politicians calling each other liars. What I am hearing here tonight is one calling another liar. Now, you're a pastor. I would never say you lied, but I think you're misrepresenting the truth.
You think I do that deliberately?
I think so.
I think I've made mistakes. They love...
To try to prove to those people on there that you know what you're talking about?
I didn't speak to many people on there.
Those people signed that thing, most of them don't know what they signed. They're against government at all levels. And they're getting a kick out of you by making a fool out of government.
Wait in line to talk to me, Mr. Lickinger. They are so proud of the work I do on the council. I met dozens of families that are hurt.
I've had, I've had three people come up.
That's sufficient.
And in that case, I will ask if anyone else...
Why don't you let Barb talk?
Has anything, who has? I'm sorry.
Barbara Cook would like to say a word.
Do I have one minute for clarification?
Well, I said three, but I guess I've only sent a...
That's kind.
10:30 anyway. Barbara, I'll give you, give you a chance. This is the last one.
I made a suggestion. We do not discuss the highly controversial Code of Conduct, and you all turned it down flat.
I just need a minute.
Just one minute?
It was said that only, Carol Vista only had three building permits. Well, there's 15, at least 15 new houses out there. So that means there's 12 offices occupied that have no permits enough. That's ended that one.
They may have gotten them before December 1st. I mean, the general...
And I gave out two newspaper articles. It was stated that we shouldn't ask the state of Maryland for anything. In one article, it's about the state of Maryland giving away $57 million to someone who didn't ask for it and didn't want it and don't need it. So if they can give away $57 million, I think we can ask for money. And would somebody, would somebody see that Dan Foster gets a copy?
The state will help us. They caused the regulations that caused our debt.
Barbara, for your information, the houses that were built in Carol Vista were permitted last year. Okay?
Well, I thought they said last year. They're saying this year.
We're talking about three.
January 1st.
I think I said two, whatever the number was, from January to now.
I just did not...
The existing homes that are in the new section were permitted last year. Okay?
I understand.
They'll need to raise water rates.
And in regard to asking for money, we do a very good job in seeking state funding in every way, any way we can. The, over two-thirds of the improvements made in the wastewater treatment plant came to us from a grant from the state of Maryland, because we asked for it. And that was a big help. So is there anything else to come forth, council tonight? There is nothing. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. If I have a sign. Thank you all.
We're going to start calling Henry the million-dollar manager for how he messed up that discussion I had with Frank. David Franky wants to help Tawny Town. He told me that. Why wouldn't you allow me to have credit for that? Everything's okay, but I can't have...
Don?